It's another beautiful evening in Pueblo, Colorado. I now call to order the regular city council meeting. Today is Monday, October 27th, 2025. First up on the agenda is the invocation. I invite up Michael Atlas Akuna, the president of Temple Emanuel Board of Directors, to lead us in the invocation. Please stand if you choose to, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance immediately following.
O guardian of life and liberty, may our nation always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. Keep our eyes open to the wonders of creation and alert to the care of the earth. May we never be lazy in the work of peace. May we honor those who have died in defense of our ideals. Grant our leaders wisdom and forbearance. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help us all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve you. May our homes be safe from affliction and strife, and our country be sound in body and spirit. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, actually to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We now move to Mr. Clerk, roll call, please. Mark Aliff here, Brett Boston here, Dennis Flores here, Roger Gomez here, Joe Latino.
Joe, are you there?
He's on.
Nice.
You're muted, Joe.
Hey, where's Joe? Is he muted?
Mr. Latino, I think you're muted. Now, Counsel Latino, can you unmute your microphone? Counsel Latino, your microphone is still muted. Regina Maestri?
Here.
Sarah Martinez.
Sure.
All right, we now move into, there is no special recognition, so we'll move right into public forum. First up is Bo Burnett. Hello, Mr. Burnett.
Hello.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Just hit your green button there. There you go.
Hello, my name is Bo Burnett. I moved to Pueblo 13 years ago. I used to live in Colorado Springs. Colorado Springs Police Officer Joshua Carrier molested my son is the reason why I left Colorado Springs to get away from the corruption. My first week living in Pueblo, I found out Pueblo has more corruption than the city of Colorado Springs from the harassment from code enforcement for my very first week living here. But what I'm here to speak about today is, on the 18th No Kings event had a protest down at the county courthouse. They advertise it as a peaceful protest, and it was not very peaceful at all, very unpeaceful. We had a petition table there to collect signatures to recall the district attorney of Pueblo. And the first hour, we were collecting signatures, everything was good. The second hour, the Democratic Party announced over the PA system to the audience not to sign our petition. Shortly after that, the angry mob surrounded our table, throwing verbal assaults at us. They stole our petition clipboard with over 100 signatures on the petition. And everything's been reported to the Attorney General, the FBI, the Police Department, and for the remaining of my time, I'd like to show you the video of how the No Kings protest mob treated us.
Yes, it just works. We don't want to break it.
Is there somebody that can work this for us?
Work.
Okay.
Can you pause the timer? Okay, you can play it now as well. Let's play.
The video is longer than the time remaining, so you guys will have to cut it off when it's ended.
Hold it up.
Obviously, Burnett, I think we get the gist of how you were treated. I think we get the gist of how you were treated. If you want to finish out some time.
Yeah, the angry mob attacked us, flipped us off, verbally insulted us. We were on a public sidewalk. We had every right to be there.
Did the police help?
The police department did not help out. And this is the second time this has happened. The first No Kings event, I wore a Trump hat to the rally. I was videotaping my tire visit at the No Kings event, and I was attacked by an angry mob. I was unlawfully arrested. I went to my first court appearance, and charges were dismissed. Soon as I went on Facebook saying I'm suing the city for the unlawful arrest, I was recharged for third degree assault. And the person that claims I assaulted him is a registered sex offender. That's one of these where cities very corrupted. I go to the police department to request discovery, and they deny it to me. They're not very helpful. They don't serve. They're very disrespectful. Thought you guys should know.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Laura Hall?
Good evening, Counsel. How is everybody doing? So I just wanted to kind of talk about our theft of our petition as well, because that is, you know, your police asked us, your police sergeant asked us what the value is. It's election materials. It's had personal identifying information of over 100 individuals on the two petitions that were stolen. So that makes it an election crime. That makes it a criminal act perpetrated by the Democratic Party and the unions and the No Kings organizers. So indivisible is behind No Kings, and so is the Democratic Party. We were harassed for 90 minutes. The police intervened kind of, but they didn't create any space. So we were crowded. And that's, you know, when our petitions got stolen, because we couldn't watch from all sides. In the case of the criminal case from the No Kings protest in June, that's not going to prevail for the city or the police or the DA, which is not. So, you know, as you know, there's a civil lawsuit in federal court, and there's going to be a state lawsuit also tomorrow. I haven't received any meaningful discovery in the criminal case. You guys need to get ahold of your police department and make them turn over the body worn cameras with the audio. You can't be turning over a body worn camera without audio. That's a Brady violation. I'm sure your attorneys will warn you about that. The videos that I was given were irrelevant. There were cops sitting down the street and doing nothing to do with my arrest, or they were nonexistent. They were corrupted files. So it's been over 120 days since our arrest, and we don't have any meaningful discovery. In fact, they gave him my discovery, and we're still trying to get it. So a Brady complaint has been made to the Colorado Attorney General on that, and we both notified the FBI. Just today, I finally got some requested material on a previous arrest from PPD, but it's two months later. If something's requested under Aleah, it needs to be turned over at no cost because of Yellow Scene Magazine versus City of Boulder. You can't charge $3,000 for a body cam. It makes it, that negates the whole point of Aleah, which is to increase its enhanced law enforcement integrity act. So turn it over, because you guys are going to get sued for that. As far as, yeah, we need to have our discovery. As far as immigration, the southern border is sealed. It's a military base now. So getting people out is important. I used to teach school, and we had kids speak in nine different languages in school. We had 42 kids in class. Actually, with all the deportations and self deportations, rent's supposed to go down, which everybody should be happy about. Schools, courts, freeways, all that stuff is burdened by increased immigration. Immigration implies a legal process. Migration implies you just jumped the border, overstayed your visa. And as far as separating children from families, families used to get in on the floor as exception. So the cartels would fake families by kidnapping kids. They would rape those kids and then use them to make a fake family at the border to get entry faster. And then they send the kids back across the border to make another fake family. So that's why they were separated from the adults. I know every time I go to jail, I don't get to take my kids, my dog, with me, you know? So why should they? I don't take my kids to prison. Expecting to take my kids. So I'm in favor of the deportations. I think that's for the reasons below. Sexually assaulting kids that are getting... Parents and from coyotes faking it. Some people in this room want more due process for illegals going out than we got when they came in. I don't think that's fair. And people want immunity for breaking federal law. It is a criminal act. It's a civil matter or a federal felony. If you've previously been deported, it's a federal felony with a 20-year sentence. So I just wanted to make you aware that as a citizen, I've had my first, second, fourth, fifth, eighth, and 14th Amendment rights violated. It seems like a lot of people here would have more sympathy for illegal aliens than their own American citizens, fellow citizens. And a lot of illegals that are here are killing people with drunk driving, accidental homicides and things like that. So the fewer of them that are here, the better. And I think we should support the federal government in deportation efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Aubrey Adams?
Hello. Thank you for coming. Thank you for having me. Hello, my name is Aubrey Adams, and I just want to say thank you to all the council members and Heather, Mayor Graham, for allowing me to speak tonight. After returning to Pueblo, after being gone for six years, I am disappointed in the city's current condition. I often feel scared when I go shopping or fill up my gas tank due to the drug use and the numerous mentally unstable people present at those locations. Last Friday, in the Sam's Club parking lot, I encountered a homeless young man wearing a Jason's mask who appeared to be psychotic. He had his hands down his pants and was talking to people that weren't there, which was unsettling. Last week, I had a young homeless man lost in psychosis sit in my front yard for about three hours, talking to people that weren't there. My home has been vandalized twice already. Now I feel a need to build a fence around my property for our safety. A person entered my backyard at 1:00 AM, but the police didn't show up. They called me, though, about 6:00 AM to check on me. Sadly, two weeks ago, I witnessed a homeless man washing his face in a puddle in front of the Taco Bell on Elizabeth Street. I'd like to recognize all the hard work city council members do. I know your position is not easy, and I also would like to thank Mayor Heather Graham for the work she has done, the positive changes she has been doing. However, her slanderous press conference of this blame game is old, unproductive, and unprofessional. I will be voting yes on two Cs, so we can save Pueblo and not politicize it. Pueblo is dying because of drugs and crime, and you can put THC and cannabis at the top of that list. Mayor Graham can allocate all the resources we have to try to cover Pueblo's problems. Still, we will continue to have the same issues until we can get drug and crime prevention efforts in place, just like she needed to stop giving our tax money to all the nonprofits, because most of those nonprofits were allocating resources attempting to mitigate the messes that Pueblo's policies have created. But they do not address the core problem, which is, we don't have any prevention. So I'd like to present a three-part plan to improve the quality of living, our health and our safety, and improve economics and increase our tax base. First, education about policies. It's essential to understand that there are three different types of drug policies. One is prevention policies that aim to discourage drug use and mitigate associated harms through education and effective consequences. They help decrease governmental spending while protecting the health and safety of individuals and communities. Then we have drug promotional policies, which allow industry to profit from commercialization and normalization of drugs, leading to increased use and harm. This expands governmental involvement with regulations and costs. Then we have drug recovery policies, which provide funding for resources to help individuals recover from drug use. As states, as our state legalizes more drug use, lawmakers will need to expand governmental efforts to address the resulting harms. Second, we need to decide which policies we can change locally, and every elected official from all sides needs to unite to make these changes. Third, we need to recognize the policies that need to be changed at the state level. Then we need a large coalition of citizens and stakeholders advocating at the Capitol to let our state legislators know that we have had enough, and that Pueblo does not have the resources, the infrastructure, or the capacity to handle these reckless policies they're forcing on our community. In other words, we must stop the insanity, because the goal of the state is to normalize and commercialize all drugs. I genuinely want the best for Pueblo, and I think you all do, too. And I recognize that there is considerable confusion about how to move our city forward. This is why I became an advocate and started my nonprofit, Every Brain Matters. I led a group of families to advocate in Texas this past year, and we have successfully banned all cannabis vapes there. And we are continuing to fight to ban all retail THC products with the support of the Lieutenant Governor and the Senate and the House bipartisan support. So I am ready to assist you and optimistic that together we can make a difference for Pueblo. Let's be Pueblo's protectors.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now move to, I believe it's Suzie? I can't, I can't remember the name that signed up. Suzie? Yeah, that's you. Jade? Great. Come on down. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor Graham and members of the City Council of Pueblo. My name is Suzie Jade, and I represent a coalition of local organizations and citizens that are concerned about what's happening on the streets across this nation. We watched mass thugs arbitrarily and violently pull people from cars, their homes, and disappear them into a maze of detention centers. Local communities are terrified, knowing that immigrants, visa holders, legal residents, and even the US citizens are being apprehended in the guise of immigration enforcement. Tonight, we are presenting you with an open letter that acknowledges that the reality of our times and express our deep concern about a September 4th email that Pueblo's District, our Director of Aviation, Greg Perdosa, sent to John Galusha, the city administrator of Walsenburg, Colorado. In this email, he speaks with Pueblo's, he asks if Mr. Galusha had contact at the proposed detention facility in Walsenburg, who could speak with Pueblo's private field partner, Freeman Jet Center. He explained he was bringing these two parties together to propose that the Freeman Jet Center located at Pueblo Memorial Airport provides service to ICE transporting flights. In our letter, we present you with our concerns over Mr. Perdosa's outreach. We also identify the eventual ramifications, both human, economic, and that could come to a community actively supporting ICE. We seek assurance that Mr. Perdosa acted alone, and that his implied support of ICE tactics and the expansion of ICE detention centers in Colorado is not reflective of the city's position. We know there's no legal way that ICE can be prevented from using the airport, and that our airport is the closest one to Walsenburg and La Jolla, where two more detention facilities have been proposed. But we offer you several actions that the city can take to make Pueblo Memorial Airport inconvenient for ICE and possibly send them elsewhere for transportation assistance. We ask that you implement these actions immediately. We do not want our tax dollars used to facilitate the transportation of people unlawfully detained or our leaders to offer ICE any place in our streets or on our airfield. You were elected to safeguard the well-being of this community, the people in it, and its future. We trust that you will act with transparency and conciseness in this defining moment. And me personally, ICE is not, it's hateful, and it's unconstitutional, and it's deplorable. So if you people are sitting there thinking that this is a good idea for us to make a little dough, then no.
No.
Thank you.
We hear you. We hear you. All right. We now move on to Abby Kraus, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your attention.
All right. Abby Kraus, I have a question for you, Ms. Kraus. Are you speaking on the zoo budget? Are you speaking about the zoo budget?
Yeah, am I in the wrong place?
Yeah, you should be when it comes up for public hearing shortly. Okay. Heather Barton? Hello, thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Heather. I'm speaking on what Jade just spoke on, about not allowing ICE in our neighborhoods. This is Pueblo, the heart of southern Colorado. Our airport is small, but it's a part of our community, a place meant for travel and connection, not trauma and fear. When ICE uses Pueblo Memorial Airport, our airport, it turns that space into a departure point for human beings. Across the nation, ICE has been documented committing abuse, neglect, inhumane treatment, separating families, detaining children into freezing cells, denying medical care, deporting people without due process. People have died in ICE custody. That's not law enforcement. That is state sanctioned harm. Do you really want that to be Pueblo's image to the rest of our state or to the rest of our country? That we would allow this kind of cruelty into our community? These are human beings, mothers, fathers, children, people who put food on our tables, watch our children, take care of our elderly and disabled, who deserve dignity and justice, not chains and cages. Our airport should never be a part during that cruelty. Pueblo stands for compassion, decency, and community. Let's keep our airport a place of connection, not deportation, because when we protect the vulnerable, we protect the very soul of Pueblo.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we now move on to Counsel and Mayor Commentary? Mayor Graham?
I don't have anything, President Aliff.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Latino, do you have anything?
No, I don't at this point. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Boston?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and just being engaged in, you know, civic involvement. To remind everybody that they have an election coming up, November 4th. Be sure to get out there, vote in your local elections, be heard, and get more involved. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, and I'd like to comment that I appreciate your zeal for Halloween. That's nice. That's nice. I haven't seen that before. Counsel Gomez?
Yeah, I'm going to bring up something that, you know, I personally know about. I'm very concerned about the increasing lack of tolerance for freedom of speech. As you may recall, I was targeted just because I made a non-threatening inquiry on behalf of a constituent. What was the result? My picture was plastered on the front page of the Chieftain newspaper by reporter James Wortola, who created the headline, "Transphobic, Dehumanizing Pedophile," all because I made a non-threatening, innocent inquiry on behalf of a constituent. I'm asking that we all reflect on this, and please work together to please lower the political rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Maestri.
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Counsel Flores?
I have a couple of things. One of them is that I think we got a lot of information this evening regarding ICE's tactics that's happening nationwide. I'm not happy about it, but let's be realistic. There really is a war against brown and black people, but... I want to put an image in your head right now. Imagine immigrants from Sweden with zip ties on their children. How do you think that the United States would react to something like that? That is- That is happening right now in the United States, the use of zip ties on children, arresting citizens, because why try to get information initially when you can just deal with that later? Bragging about giving full immunity, which really dictates that ICE agents can act in impunity against mostly people that look like me. And it doesn't matter that my family has been in the United States till at the beginning of the state of New Mexico and Santa Fe. It doesn't really matter to an ICE agent what, you know, where I came from. I just believe it's a travesty, that's what's going on now. I'm going to try to pass a resolution indicating that the city of Pueblo will not be a party And the other issue is this, is that if they use our airport, which we all know there's limitations as to what we can do as a state or a city, the federal government can do whatever they want out at the airport because they provide funds to us, they, whatever. But rest assured that if in fact we would enter into a contract with Core Civic, which owns the for-profit prison in Walsenburg, they would be flying people and they would have to set up another detention center at our airport. That would be part of my resolution. We do not want any type of an agreement with the city of Walsenburg, Core Civic, the Werfenau County, anybody that's associated with that prison. And that will be something that I'll try to author for our next meeting. But on the issue of whether or not we were in communication with, you know, with anyone, would really bothers me, not so much that we have, I don't believe that the city or the mayor or our director has had any direct communication. And I take them at their word, that they have had no communication with any federal government official at all. But here's what bothers me, is that, and I thank you ladies for getting the Cora request and actually getting a copy of the email. In that email, we were actually soliciting business by asking the city of Walsenburg whether or not they could, they had a contact with all of the, in fact, let me read it. "I am reaching out to you on behalf of our airfield partners Freeman Jet Center. They provide jet fueling and aircraft handling at KPUB, that's our airport. They manage multiple jet centers across the US and service the ICE deportation flights in other communities. I am hoping that you may have a contact with the detention center in Walsenburg who can speak to Freeman Jet Management to propose Pueblo Airport provides service to these flights if needed. If they would prefer, you can give them our contacts for Freeman Leadership." Here we are as a city actually trying to get business, you know, for our airport, not understanding the political explosion that would be created. And I'm very, very disappointed about that. So I don't want to go beyond that. I'll have more to say when I present the other. The other thing I want to talk about is the press conference our mayor has had, you know, it is probably a good thing that she did that because that explains better than anything about how can a government operate in the city of Pueblo when there's so much animosity between the two parties, the city council and our mayor, that basically has been destroyed. We cannot get along, who does it harm? It harms the citizens. It's like the Indians in India say, "When two elephants fight, the only thing that gets harmed is the grass." And that's what my concern is. I'm disappointed that she had to trash us with the press, but for us not to be able to defend ourselves is also wrong. I don't believe, okay, that this is good government when you can trash the city council and expect to have some sort of a working relationship. It's just not good governance and I'm really disappointed that that happened. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
With SNAP and food assistance programs that are going to go away in a couple of days, I really think that we need to be concerned about our neighbors right now. There's been a group that's been pulled together of service providers who are providing food, Care and Share, Rocky Mountain Share, Pueblo Food Project, DHS, and I just, they are doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work and I just wanted to thank them and the United Way for leading that effort. But I also want to remind everyone that we're going to have a lot of families who are in need of food, particularly with the holidays. And so I'm asking to do three things. One, you can financially donate to help, you know, get some food items for our friends and family that are needing it. You can donate unused things in your kitchens and then you can donate your time. With the increase of people who are going to be accessing our food banks, they're going to need volunteers too. If you're looking for a way to help out this Thanksgiving, please, please, please don't forget our friends and our family and our kids who are needing food. You can find more information at 211 or United Way and United Way of Pueblo County is providing all of that information. So please, please help out for this month, if not more than that, and help get our families fed.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't have anything. We'll move to the review and the approval of the agenda. Sarah, motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agenda, but we have to review the agenda first, don't we?
Yeah.
Starting with page one.
So we're going to review the agenda now. Page one. Oops. Page two.
President Aliff, can we move M1 and M2 to the regular agenda?
Did you get that, Mr. Clerk? Okay. Hey, as you guys leave, could you allow us to finish our business here? Conduct our business.
Come on.
She'd like to move M1 and M2 to the regular agenda. Page three. Page four. And page five.
Mr. President, I make a motion to amend the agenda, moving items M1 and M2 to the regular agenda and approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Counselors. Our second, Counselor Gomez. It's called, any questions? It's called for the vote.
It's a voice vote tonight.
Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
And Sarah Martinez? Passes seven zero. We now go to the reading and approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes of the regular meeting dated October 14, 2025, as distributed.
Sarah Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? It's called for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez? Passes unanimously. We now move into item J, public hearings. Mr. Clerk, item J1. J1.
The public hearing is held for the purpose of receiving public testimony as it pertains to the 2024 proposed annual budget per the requirement of Section 7-9 of the Charter for the City of Pueblo.
Thank you. Mr. Gifford, I have a question for you. When taking testimony on the budget, are we asking for just testimony or are we asking for for and against?
Just testimony.
Thank you. So this is a hearing on the proposed budget. Is there anyone wishing to testify on the budget, the proposed budget? Please state your name and could you spell your last name for the clerk when, if you hit your mic there. Thank you.
Renee, R-E-N-E-E, and then Wahlen, W-A-H-L-E-N.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Again, my name is Renee Wahlen and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Pueblo Zoo. As you review the city budget, I ask you to consider the many ways that our zoo serves as a cornerstone of this community. I'm Director of Education at the Pueblo Zoo and I actually moved to Pueblo and became a financial contributor to the economy of the city because of the zoo. But what I discovered here is so much more. I found a warm, welcoming community where I feel at home. I've been an environmental educator for over 15 years and I'm proud to be a part of the passionate, dedicated, and talented team of educators, keepers, and staff who work tirelessly every day to provide a place of learning, conservation, and community connection right here in Pueblo. Each year, thousands of local students visit the zoo through school programs that bring science and conservation to life. Our zoo school, camps, family nights, and outreach programs give children hands-on experience that no textbook can provide. For many Pueblo students, the zoo offers their first encounter with wildlife and their first spark of curiosity about caring for our planet. During a recent zoo school field trip, one of our students was busy taking pictures of her friends and teachers. She told me she was making a memory book and planned to give me a copy because she wanted everyone to share her memories. Zoo School serves homeschool and public school students in grades K through eight and stories like hers remind us that the zoo is not just a place to learn about animals, it is a place where children learn to make friends, grow, and belong. What doesn't always show up on a financial report are these individual impacts, the moments that shape a child's confidence and future. Our zoo is another powerful example. It offers young people the chance to learn animal handling skills that may lead to a career, but more importantly, they gain leadership and social skills that will serve them for life. Some teens begin the program too shy to even speak to adults, but with guidance and practice, they become confident young educators, standing before the public, holding a tortoise or chakwala, sharing what they've learned. If I feel proud watching them, imagine what these young people and their families must feel. These are life-changing experiences. Your continued support ensures that Pueblo remains home to a zoo that meets national accreditation standards, attracts visitors, and reflects the values of compassion, stewardship, and education that we want our children to learn. As an educator, one of my favorite quotes is this, "In the end, we will only conserve what we love. We will love only what we understand, and we will understand only what we are taught." That is the heart of what the Pueblo Zoo does every single day. I urge you to continue your investment in the zoo. Your support keeps the zoo accessible, educational, and vibrant, a place that strengthens the heart of our community and inspires the next generation of conservationists. It is a living, breathing reminder that Pueblo is a city that values life, learning, and connection. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to Pueblo's quality of life.
Thank you. Want to remind everybody, this is still a public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the budget? Come on down. Would you please spell your last name for the clerk?
Ken Dante, D-A-N-T-I.
Thank you.
And I wanted to talk about the zoo because it's important to myself and my spouse. We take our grandkids, when we have them, to that zoo. It's one of our little events that we go to. And that zoo is important. It's an important city property. We ought to fund it properly. Last year, their dues went up about 50%. So the previous year, it was about $80. This last year, it was $120. Is it going to go up another, you know, is it going to go to $200 next? I would hope that the city could find the funds to keep the zoo operational and maybe even expand it. So let's not look at cutting everything, let's look at trying to get more revenue sources into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give testimony on the budget?
Mr. President?
Come on down. I'll get to you next, Mr. Martinez.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak again. My name is Aubrey Adams and I would like to see a more balanced budget and I would like Pueblo to get to the heart of the problem, why the zoo is up here asking for help. The zoo must survive. We must have safe spaces of learning for our children and our families. Our children are exposed to marijuana everywhere we go around this community. It causes severe mental illness like psychosis. These marijuana vapes are like a chemical assault to the brain. So what I would like to see is a more balanced budget and not put all our resources at trying to put a Band-Aid on all the blight. Let's get to the root of the problem. Let's fix Pueblo. Let's save Pueblo bipartisan way. Let's come together. Let's support the zoo. Let's support all these places that are fun, family activities, and not this drug-infested haven that our policies have promoted here, where we are just, no matter how many resources we have, we're just going to keep flooding our resources at the problems and take away from where we need to be giving with the zoo. It's sad. It makes me want to cry. It breaks my heart to see the condition of Pueblo and to watch the city council meetings that we're just like throwing hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars at the blight, but we're not getting rid of the problem. I hope and I am hopeful that we can all come together and that we can balance the budget, we can get rid of the problems that are causing us so much, the costs, the financial costs that are causing us with all these drugs and crime. Let's get prevention in and let's support the zoo. Let's support our schools. Let's support whatever we can to have fun, family activities, and a safe environment where our children don't have all this access to all this crime and drugs. Let's do this. So thank you for letting me speak and I look forward to the future of Pueblo.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give testimony on the budget? Come on down.
Hi. I just wanted to say, please.
Could you state your name and then spell your last name for the clerk, would you, please?
B-A-R-T-O-L-I. Thank you. I would like to encourage you, please, to support the human society and the zoo in particular because I love animals. Not only that, the human society here is wonderful. I'm a colony manager, never thought I would be, but when some cats showed up, they were wonderful, really. I was surprised because my experience with the human societies before was not good, even in Fort Collins. And so please support human society and the zoo. Also, the reason that they should be fully funded is because if they're not, the ones that are going to pay the price are going to be the end. the ones that are going to pay the price are going to be the animals. And that is really cruel and unnecessary. I know that because I've been a CNA in skilled nursing facilities, nursing homes for almost forty years. And I know what happens when the funds are diminished, cut, whatever. The people, what pays the price are the patients, especially the patients that cannot speak for themselves and the animals are like, they cannot speak for themselves. So please think of the animals that cannot speak for themselves and don't be cruel to them. Please support these wonderful organizations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give testimony on the budget? Come on down. Please state your name and spell your last name for the clerk, will you?
Randy Thurston, T H U R S T O N. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I mean, obviously this is a monumental time in decisions being made and money mismanagement and all of the different things that we're looking at that's taking place. There seems to be a lot of confusion and a lot of the confusion has to do. We have a mayor that says we need a one percent sales tax that we're broke. We have another mayor that says, an ex-mayor that says there's fifty million dollars. We have plenty of money. But the citizens, taxpayers, that's the ones that really need to understand what's going on because whether you're the mayor or city council, we all have an obligation to protect and represent the taxpayers. Where are their voice? What is their level of accountability that we have towards them or the responsibility to make sure that they're protected? So over the past seven years, under the mayor form of government, Pueblo's structural deficit spending has been out of control. We've had in that seven years, two, one time, twice, a lifetime opportunity with federal relief funds with ARPA money and debrusing funds that created a windfall in two years, which was a massive amount of of sales tax coming into this. But I kind of set this up as a reservoir that has almost drained. You had two big floods that filled it up, but we're back to the drought. It's not something that can be factored in or figured in for the future, for the financial structure and and success of this community. But those funds are gone and we're back to the drought. What are the decisions we're making right now today? In this, in this budget, you've got four buildings or three buildings and an air conditioning that have been put on as a liability. Those themselves have a financial cost, but then there's a long-term liability of all of the operating expenses that go with that. And if you look at the timeline of the obligations, you're looking at fifteen years that now will be burdened for future councils, future citizens, future or lost opportunity for growth. Because growth needs to have money available to feed growth. We need to expand our tax base. We don't need to be taxing our citizens because there was mismanagement or bad planning when the agenda was brought forward by the mayor. We cannot build Pablo's future on one-time money. You know, the, the jobs that are available only happen when we become a safe community. And right now that needs also be a priority in the budget to not just throw money at things, but really start coming up with programs. Because with the community that is viewed like ours, that is soft on crime and there's a lot of issues with the crime, it's hard to attract people in the real estate industry. There's more people leaving Pueblo than coming in. And that's going to further damage the future sales tax revenue that's projected there. There is a mistrust and I understand why. When council is receiving information, you need to get complete information. The example of the PBR building, I remember very clearly the night that was presented to you and it had a presentation from Andrew Hayes saying that the alternative to buying this building is a twenty-five million dollar office complex. Well, where in the world did it come up that the office complex was needed into that level, but it was such a good deal. It was only seven million. It was actually it was six million, but we had to pay seven million because a million dollars of taxpayer dollars just went out like that. These are the kinds of things that I think need to be looked at very seriously there. There's also been added debt of about thirty million dollars of three fire stations. Actually more, but the fact is, is that debt was at the highest interest rate that has existed. And that again throws a long-term liability into the future situation there. But the one that I really want to focus on is the personnel cost. I've got a document that talked about before the mayor, the two mayors came into being in twenty seventeen, there was sixty million dollars in personnel cost. And all of you know that in personnel cost, that is the number one highest single item that impacts the taxpayers of Pueblo. They don't mind having taxpayer dollars spent on efficiencies and structure and getting people that get paid a fair and good wage. But today, today, I just need to finish this one thing.
Comes up, Mr. Thurston?
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on the budget? Come on down. So our drill today is state your name and spell your last name, please.
Good evening, Kyle Aber, A B E R. I'm going to keep this short for you guys. I know you've got a long night and you've already heard a lot of speaking in favor of the zoo. I just wanted to come up here. I am the president of the Pueblo Zoological Society this year and I will be next year as well. We're not here to fight, you know, we're not here to argue, but we're just here to tell you that we really do need just, we're so close on where we need to be. I've been over and over and back and forth and through this budget, as I'm sure you have. And I know we all remember, you know, Mr. McCain here, last time the zoo was here, talked about the city was trying to make their own cuts at the departmental level as well. Frankly, I don't see those cuts. I went through all of their expenditures with the exception of the clerk's office were going up. And I understand that cuts are hard, cuts are extremely hard, especially when all of the things that you need, all of the prices are going up. So it makes sense. We went through, we calculated all of the expenditures out for all the departments. Once you strip out the increases to salaries, which I understand are necessary because they were negotiated, it's still a four percent increase year over year for the city. So we're not asking for a huge amount. We went back. You have Abby's two proposals. They're very well thought out. They show you exactly where we need to be at that nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollar number. That increase from what's in the budget is less than point zero zero one percent of the city's budget. It is, it is a pittance for the city, but it's everything for us. And I also would want to come up here just so you guys know, this is our, this is here, this is our board. We're going to have a few more board members at the next meeting, but we're not, we're not here to show solidarity or anything. We're here to tell you, we are committed to doing everything we can to increase revenue next year, to increase donations. The board is here. They're going to be here next year. We're going to do everything we can to increase money on our end. If you guys can just meet us in the middle and get us to that number, then we will be set. So I thank you all so very much for your time, for your service and for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez on Zoom. Did you still want to testify?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Alice Martinez, M A R T I N E Z. And I just want to say for the record, Mr. Clerk, it's the budget of twenty twenty-six, not twenty twenty-four. So, and I one hundred percent support the zoo and those who spoke in favor of the zoo and me personally have donated to the zoo at the end of this year, at the end of last year, and I want to do another donation here soon. But what I would propose to you guys, because this is proposal, so if you want to jot this down and I went over the budget like I always do, where did the agreement come from, from CSAC? But by moving it to a contract, where's that contract at? And I'll pull a core on that here probably tomorrow. So I would say cut fifty percent from the mayor's office on the professional services, because that's up over two hundred thousand dollars. That would save a hundred ten thousand five hundred. Cut twenty-five percent of professional services, whatever this is though, from city council, that would save forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. We could divert back to four accountants, number two that we have. That would save approximately a hundred thousand dollars. We could also in prior years, go back to two accounting technicians, number four. And that would save about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And these are just estimates with of course benefits and everything. Abolish the part of a paralegal because we have a legal analyst, we have several attorneys and everything. That would save about a hundred thousand dollars. And other monies that we could save is take out the entire travel cost that city council could be reimbursed with just twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Because not many of you guys probably travel outside of town for business and you guys shouldn't be paid for any potential travel inside the city limits or even the county, if you guys have to go to a meeting. That's just a bunch of malarkey. And unfortunately, where I found some money that we could probably take from, it's in the budget for two hundred sixty-six thousand forty dollars for the shelter, which equates to twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy dollars for a month, which equates to seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents a day, which equates to thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour. I love to do this math. So I would say unfortunately, take a hundred thousand dollars from them, making that a hundred and sixty-six thousand forty dollars, what we could award them next year. And I'm not for us owning the shelter because that opens us up to liability. And that saves us at least, being conservative with these numbers, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which our deficit is eleven point nine million. So that would take us roughly eleven point three, eleven point four million dollars with the budget. Although I know Mayor Graham has tried to cut back from other stuff, but there's other cuts. I didn't go into detail for every single department, which I had more time to go into detail with every single department, but how it was said just by Mercer Thurston, it's the salaries which is the most money. It's our personnel. So unfortunately, we probably have to work with a skeleton crew and probably do a freeze on new employees, except for any public safety. There should never be a freeze on public safety employees, but if a job hasn't been filled in four months, we should just cut that seventy thousand dollar annual pay for that person or sixty thousand, whatever it is, and just abolish it for a year or two. Hiring freeze. Yes, it sucks for some employees, but we have to abolish more of these jobs. And I know we abolished some jobs for next year, as the mayor already stated. But technically for this year, we have eight hundred ninety employees per what was put out on the budget and we have eight hundred ninety employees for next year. We abolished, but then we added some other jobs that were needed for the SCOs or SROs, whatever those ones are in the police department. And I agree by adding those ones, but we technically didn't eliminate any personnel, which we have to pay the personnel and the full-time people have to get benefits. So if we could also cut back some full-time to part-time and then save money on benefits right there, that would probably equate probably close to seven hundred thousand dollars, which we could save for next year's budget. And any, all of you guys know how to get ahold of me. You guys have my email. You guys have my number. So you could email me, call me, we could set up a meeting, we could put our brains together. Two brains are better than one. And I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give testimony on the budget? Come on down. Hello. Thank you for coming. Please state your name and spell your last name for the clerk, please.
My name is Sandra Scherer.
Can you turn your mic on there? There you go.
Sandra Scherer, S H E R R E R. Hello, thank you. I just also.
Pull that mic up close to you. That way we can hear you again.
I also want to say that I want to see a more balanced budget. I'm tired of seeing the the budget in a deficit. And I wanted to say, I wanted to make a proposal that we develop a goal to have a balanced budget from one mayor to the next that, so that we pass on our budgets in a balance, in balance, not passing on the next, to the next mayor a budget that's in the, you know, that's a deficit. And so, you know, as we are the home of heroes, I would like for us to be the home of a balanced budget. And I just want to say best wishes to Brett and Mr. Boston and this Maestri in this election. We both, we need you both. We need your expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wish to testify on the budget? Sing. One more. Come on down. Hello, thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Brett Averna. V E R N A. How's everybody?
Perfect.
Happy Halloween. That's pretty awesome. We're strolling into that attitude. So all I'm asking counsel is because, you know, before we approve these budgets or get into this stuff is, is I think we need to really focus on trying to get a balanced budget. When we look at our reserves that go back to two thousand eighteen, prior to having a mayor form of government, our basic reserves at that point in time was thirty-one million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars in two thousand eighteen. The projected budget is dropping the reserves from thirty-seven million, six sixty-nine by twelve million dollars because that we're going to be over budget based on the proposed budget, which drops us down to reserves of twenty-five, one thirty-three, two sixty-one. That is a twenty-one percent fall in our reserves. As we, I don't think that, has our economy fell down twenty-one percent? No. So all I'm asking is the council to really focus on looking at that. But I, one of the couple of things that I could pick up increasingly, I know that we had, which I heard tonight, increased personnel costs of over forty percent from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-six on the proposed budget. That's a forty percent increase of operations in one category. Yet we're taking all the budgets everywhere else. We really need to look at that and that is just in personnel cost. All I'm asking you guys, before we approve this budget, if it has to table out a little bit, and I haven't got all the numbers, I just grabbed a few in some perspective areas and a lot of that I look at reserves because the stability of our whole city is based on its reserves. So if we go back to nineteen eighty-four, Fred Wisebrough, we were in the worst time. That is the time of when we found the economic development half-cent sales tax. That's the time that PEPs was formed. Our capital reserve budget at that time, nineteen eighty-four, was ten million dollars. In a time that we were at the worst we could and that maintained, they even added to it in the few years after because they knew the risk of getting our operating budget, our reserve budget down in case of a disaster or something major. We need to pay attention. That's how you have a successful business. With that, with what I'm trying to say, and that point in time, nineteen eighty-four to now, if we go in this budget that we are presently going and we drop our reserves down by next year, we're going to be equal to about what we were in nineteen eighty-four. I don't think our economic base is dropped that far down to where we were in nineteen eighty-four. Even from our budget pre-mayor form of government to manager to where we are now in total budget, I think we're asking ourselves to spend approximately a hundred and seventeen million dollars with the revenue of a hundred and five million dollars, which gives us that twelve million dollar offset that we'll have to seek into reserves. So if we're going to ask for that as a budget, all I'm asking is that maybe we should stop and really look at the budget before we make this decision on approving this budget that's out in front of us. And I just grabbed a few things and I could get deeper if I need to, if I had access to it. In the old days when we had the manager form of government, every department had come and presented their budget in front of city council. So we as public could sit on that side over there and really see what was really going on in the city. With the form of government under the mayor, form of government, we don't get that transparency. As a taxpayer, the citizen of Pueblo, they do it behind those doors. And then it's presented to you. You guys can go into those meetings, but you guys aren't having the ability to ask questions and cross-examine the budget or ask each one of the department heads. And that is not right when we're in a form of operating our tax dollars. You can't run a business. It's hard to run a business when you change your chief executive operating officer every four or eight years. That's been proven. Fred Wisebrough stayed on for sixteen years. We had Lou Quigg that was on for seventeen years and involved in our government twenty-six years. So when you see that longer, your chief executive officer that runs your company is on for a longer term than even you guys. You guys are on a period of four, eight years, but we can do long-term planning. I'm not going to get on that. I'm not going to get on that horse very much, but what I really want to talk about is the budget, we need to pay attention to it. You can't see it when it's behind the closed doors, I can't see it, I have to do a lot of research. When the pre way, you guys could all see it and make a decision on the decision you're about ready to make right now on the future of our taxpayers. For us to take down our reserves, it's scary, that's all I want to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak, have testimony on the budget? Saying none, this hearing is now closed. Mr. Clerk, we now move to the consent agenda. Item L Communications, L one.
L one, minutes of the, sorry. L one, minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for nine, ten, twenty, twenty five. M three, a resolution establishing a new account project, H U two five one three, concrete improvement, St. Clair Phase Two, transferring funds in the amount of a hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars eighty cents from H U A M zero one, street resurfacing to account project H U two five one three and awarding construction contract in the amount of a hundred sixty seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars eighty cents to balance concrete LLC for project number twenty five dash zero seven six, concrete improvement, St. Clair Avenue Phase Two, Arlene Avenue to Prairie Avenue, setting for thirty thousand for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent execute the same. M four, a resolution awarding a construction contract in the amount of a hundred twenty three thousand six hundred and thirty three dollars to industrial constructors and managers, Inc., and setting for twelve thousand three hundred and sixty three dollars thirty cents for contingencies and additional work for project number twenty five dash zero seven three, W W A N zero four, F Y, F Y twenty twenty five, wastewater secondary clarified number two rehabilitation at the James R. Diorio Water Reclamation Facility and authorizing the purchasing agent execute the same. M five, a resolution awarding a construction contract amount of thirty six thousand four hundred and ninety three dollars to LG Contractors, a limited liability company for project number twenty five dash zero five four, concrete improvements, one on one West Riverwalk, setting forth fifty five hundred dollars for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent execute the same. M six, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract in the amount of six thousand six hundred and forty nine dollars fifty one cents with the Parker Escavating, Inc., for emergency sanitary sewer point repair, thirty sixteen Vale Avenue, project number twenty four dash zero three three, W W A N zero three, and approving the purchasing agent execution of the same. M seven, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract in the amount of six thousand three hundred and thirty eight dollars ninety nine cents with Parker Escavation, Inc., for emergency sanitary sewer point repair, one sixteen Colorado Avenue, project number twenty four dash zero zero three, W W A N zero three, approving the purchasing agent execution of the same. M eight, a resolution authorizing issuance of revocable permit, rev dash twenty five dash three six to Bessemer Historical Society, doing business to Steel City Works of the West to host the Bessemer Trunk or Treat. M nine, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit, rev twenty five dash three seven to Chick's Crispy Chicken to host a trunk or treat event with a grand opening ribbon cutting. M ten, a resolution approving a professional service agreement between the City of Pueblo, a Colorado Miss corporation and the Community Development Strategies LLC for consulting work for HUD related programs and authorizing the purchasing agent execute the same. M eleven, a resolution awarding a construction contract in the amount of fifty four thousand eight hundred and eighty four dollars to Cleary Building Corp. for project number twenty five dash zero nine one, Elmo Gulp Course Maintenance Shed, setting forth eight thousand dollars for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent execute the same. M twelve, a resolution authorizing the funds of three hundred and five thousand six hundred and twenty eight dollars twenty four cents from the Black Hill Energy Underground Fund to be expended expended for the purpose of relocating overhead electrical facilities undergrounds for facility construction project for the Board of Waterworks. N one, an ordinance amending section seventeen dash four dash forty two and seventeen four dash forty three of Title seventeen of the Pueblo Municipal Code relating to minimum parking requirements with the applicable transit service area. N two, an ordinance amending section two of chapter two, section fifty one of chapter four, and sections four and ten of chapter ten of Title seventeen of the Pueblo Municipal Code relating to off premises signs. N three, an ordinance approving an amendment between Exxon Enterprise, Inc., Delaware Corporation, and the City of Pueblo, Colorado Miss Corporation for the purchase and installation of an interview room, video system, software, storage and related services, and authorize the mayor execute the same. N four, an ordinance approving a purchasing agreement and related documents between Circle K Store, Inc., a Texas Corporation, and the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, is there an approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to receive and file the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, approve all resolutions set forth in the consent agenda, pass the ordinances of the consent agenda, setting the public hearing for November tenth, twenty twenty five, and order the ordinances to be published by title.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Maestri? Any questions? Call for the vote.
Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez? Pass the seven zero.
Pass the seven zero. Mr. Clerk, we now move to the regular agenda item M one.
M one. A resolution authorizing the transfer of four hundred thousand dollars from nineteen ninety two to twenty twenty six sales and use tax capital improvement project funds for the purpose of providing upkeep and maintenance to the building held for the purpose of job creating capital projects.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we have a staff report.
Hi, Council, Mayor, the resolution before you transfers four hundred thousand dollars in the half cent sales tax fund to project E D B L D G for the purpose of upkeep and maintenance of the buildings held in that fund, which excludes the Pope Block. There is a project specific to Pope Block, which is in the regular agenda as I, I believe Q three. I brought this forward on October fourteenth, request from council was for additional information on expenses. That was provided pending any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second? Counselor Gomez? Counselor Maestri?
Oh, I just wanted to bring this forward. I, I'm a, I'm a little concerned about, there's very little expense each year, and it looks like there should be a balance left in that account, correct, in twenty twenty two? Expenses that you gave me, that there's almost half of it left, right, the four hundred thousand?
The balance in the account, I believe right now, I want to say ballpark is around thirty thousand. I might be off on that figure, but I can report that back to council.
Okay. And the reason why, because it looks like it's only been like thirty thousand here, I think the my iPad just went dead on me because I had all the figures up here earlier when I first got here. But it just seems like we're not using the amount, and since we're trying to keep a certain amount in the sales tax account so that we could use the interest to pay some bills when it comes to these new C O P projects like the the train, air conditioning unit, and then we have the P B R building to try to keep that balance and more in place than to collect that interest to make those payments. I just, why did we increase cameras by the price on cameras when the cost on cameras went up? Are we adding new cameras to the system? Did we have to buy new cameras?
Yes, I believe that is related to item Q three for the Pope Block. There was a new installation for the badge access as well as the fire alarm system.
Oh, no, this was at the P B R building for the first floor.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, because we're different.
Yeah, so my understanding is that the badge access system that was existing in the P B R, that P B R health was needing replacement. I would defer to our I T department for the specifics on that one. To address the concern about the interest earned in the half cent sales tax fund, it is based on total dollars in the fund.
Correct.
So even if we have these dollars budgeted for.
You're not releasing it till needed?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Any other questions?
President Aliff, I just want to add that the total since twenty twenty two was three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The number for twenty twenty five is year to date as of September, so you still have a few more months. And I don't see any cameras on this, I see HARP CAM fees, Cedar Ridge Landscapes.
I guess CAM fee.
Compliance Service and I M G property insurance, so I don't see any cameras that are listed.
What are the CAM fees?
The CAM fees are to the Riverwalk, to the HARP Authority, any building that's located on Riverwalk property has to pay a CAM fee to the HARP Authority.
Okay.
Anything else? Let's go for the vote. Excuse me, Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez? And a pass the seven zero. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, M two.
M two, a resolution transferring four hundred thousand dollars from project number L T twenty four oh eight Park Construction, Eagle Ridge Park into project number L T twenty five oh three, Ray Aguilera Park perimeter, 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 can't see that, a perimeter construction contract amount of three hundred eighty thousand eight hundred and eighty three dollars thirty five cents to Acorn Construction Company and setting forth nineteen thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars sixty five cents for contingencies for project number twenty five dash zero eight seven, Ray Aguilera Park perimeter and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute the same.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we have a staff report.
Mr. Resident, Members of Council, good evening, the resolution before you transfers funds from L T twenty four oh eight Park Construction, Eagle Ridge Park into project L T twenty five oh three, Ray Aguilera Park perimeter project. The total contract award amount is three hundred eighty thousand eight hundred eighty three dollars and thirty five cents to Acorn Construction Company. There is approximately nineteen thousand dollars remaining as well out of that four hundred K that would be moved to go towards contract contingencies. That concludes our report, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you for that report, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores? Counselor Maestri?
What's left in the account after you have the, removed the four hundred thousand?
Would you repeat that, please?
What we, what's the balance left in the account after you remove the four hundred thousand?
That is, that's what that project consisted of, four hundred thousand.
Is just four hundred thousand, yes, I don't like the fact that it's coming from the park that's been really needed and wanted by the citizens who live in that area. I mean, if we're slowly building a fund for that park to develop it, then I would prefer that, I can't vote for that because I have way too many constituents that are upset that has been underdeveloped all these years. So I won't be voting for that tonight, I was going to ask, I've asked Counselor Gomez to see if he could find money from somewhere else and not have to, you know, come into my, my park fund that we, like I said, we've been waiting and apparently we've only got four hundred thousand in it in order to do something over at Ray Aguilera Park, so. That's.
Counselor, I mean, Mayor Graham.
Thanks, I just want to add a little bit to this, so this was allocated in the twenty twenty four budget as a grant match. The city was not successful in receiving the grant dollars, the grant, the park is just not four hundred thousand dollars. It's several million dollars, so in the twenty twenty four budget, city council allocated the four hundred thousand dollars as a grant match. We were unsuccessful in getting the grant, that four hundred thousand dollars has remained in this account. Councilman Gomez requested that the Bessemer Park be fenced because these are lottery funds, they can be used at any park facility within the community. So I believe that this was a good use of funds because we were not successful in receiving the other grant dollars that are needed to facilitate the construction of this park.
Counselor Gomez?
Well, boy, I just want to be pit one district council with another, I, I am concerned that both these areas safety is our number one obligation, we all know that, and kids were the main obligation for me. So safety in this park or parks in reference to other issues, whether it be blight or anything else, so the fencing is really central to that park, if you can go by there any time of the day, we have a big issue, I think we're spending a lot of money to keep that up, it's a beautiful little park, it's seven point three acres, I've walked it off myself. But again, I can understand Counselor Martin, excuse me, Counselor Maestri's concerns as well, so I'm just kind of sitting back and see how this plays, thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Would you mind describing this project? It sounds like it's a fence around this, but can you describe it maybe in more detail?
It's an, it'll be an ornamental fence. That'll be aluminum fence around the perimeter, it'll tie into the ball field fence, they'll have gates at the parking lot, pool parking lot, at the parking lot by the fountain, and there'll be walk-in gates and staff will open and close that regular pool for park hours, six A M and close them up at ten P M.
So during reg, so during regular hours, we could still have the same problem because they could walk inside the fence?
Right, we can't close the park.
Yeah. Right.
Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, again, if you look at the size of that park in reference to, again, the safety, and I I'm able to cost benefit analysis of what it would mean if we did have it fenced in, I mean, we're talking about damage to the statues, the bathrooms, the police involvement, the overtime, park rangers, there's a lot of money there, so I can't compare something I don't have data on. But I got a sneaky suspicion if we did get that fence up in short order, it would pay it for itself, thank you.
So my question would be for the mayor, I mean, I understand the four hundred thousand was the match and we were unsuccessful in the match, but can we keep Eagle Ridge Park as a priority and moving forward and look for other ways to get that funded? Because fifteen years to wait for a park's a long time, it's been that long.
Yeah, it has, I don't necessarily think it's been fifteen, but it's been many years. But the city receives about one point five million dollars in lottery funds. Every year, that's how we do all of our capital to all of our parks, equipment, it goes to pay for some employees. So if city council would like to allocate more money to that park, we can definitely do that, this was an immediate request from Councilman Gomez in his district, and I thought that that took priority over a grant match that we were unsuccessful. And, and we've applied for it several times, and we've been unsuccessful several times. So we can allocate additional funding to replace that four hundred thousand dollars out of lottery funds.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Call for the vote. Yeah, Counselor Latino, go ahead.
Yes. I have a concern about us fencing parks. I understand the need because I've been up in that area just like in my area down on the east side, and, and it's a problem with, with, with the indigent, with the homeless, and the fact that young kids can't go and play in that park for, for fear of, of being hurt or even worse. I guess a question I have also is where are the park rangers? Because I, I have a situation down on the east side at El Central that's similar to what's going on up on up there on, and Bessemer Park or Aguilera Park. I, I think we need to stop thinking about doing kinds of things to we're not dealing with the real problem, and the problem is the homeless, the problem is, 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 is drugs, the, you know, we have a needle exchange place less than a block and a half away. Basically, that's where the homeless hang out, doing their, their needles, and then they go in the park. Again, I've, I've been through that up around that Bessemer area with Mr. Gomez a few times, and I've traveled that area myself at night. As I, as I've indicated you, I'm on the streets at night. But I've been up in that area and it's, it's unbelievable, you don't see police anywhere, they're nowhere. And, 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 and again, we're this is America. This is America, man, land of the free and home of the brave, and, and we're locking up things, gating things, putting, putting wire fences up and, and doing all those kinds of things that just it does, it doesn't, doesn't look, look good for this. It does, it doesn't, doesn't look, look good for this community. It really doesn't. When you're ranked number 10 in the country in crime out of 20,000 cities and towns, to continue to do those kinds of things without dealing with the real problem. The problem is homelessness. The problem is, is our, our gangbangers. The problem is we had shootings. The problem is we had vehicles up on Eagle Ridge after the, the big airshow that we had. Some of them were shot up. Come on, come on. Let's get real about things and let's start dealing with the problem. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Maestri?
I have to agree with Mr. Latino, Counselor Latino. You know, drugs are a big problem and I think it's, you know, I don't know why we don't have park rangers. If we don't have police patrolling, why we don't have park rangers patrolling those areas and those parks during certain hours in order to keep some sort of peace within the parks after, at night.
Well, the question would be to the Parks Department. We do have park rangers, correct?
We do have park rangers, but we have over 80 parks as well and only two full-time park rangers. We have, I think, four temp park rangers, but they can't be everywhere at the same time. They, they make their rounds and they spend a lot of time at Bessemer Park. They, they're almost on a first-name basis with some of those people there, pick up trash for them and stuff, but they can't be there 24/7, unfortunately.
Counselor Gomez?
The problem is now, if we look at it, you know, all the, I've talked to the park rangers. I went and met with them. See, these are some great dedicated people. I've been down to the department and they need help. I mean, they can't be everywhere. The, the chances of catching somebody in a felony of a commission at the park is a billion to one. And if you give the park rangers and I let them do their jobs, give them the keys to the place, they can, you have the constituents that line this park all the way around. And they're asking, please, our kids don't go over there like they used to. We get a pool right across, we get a pool that's there. The activity has gone down because they're afraid for their kids. What's wrong with like they do in major cities? They, they have in New York and New Jersey, they have parks that size and they surround them with ornament, ornamental fencing and a beautiful fencing. I'm not talking about something you find that looks like a jail. You're talking about beautiful fencing. They put it up, problem solved. This is not rocket science. All I'm saying is right now I've seen this in reference to a park that's there, not one that's going to be to be park. This one's there now and it's, I have Bessemer residents are going through the roof. They want to feel safe and they don't feel safe in the park.
Counselor Maestri?
I'm not sure how fencing in the park is going to create safety even during the day. I mean, you're, when you get in those parks, I mean, there's got to be a lot of gates around that park because it's such a big park that if somebody's coming at you, you got to find a gate to get, to escape from.
I don't know. Anybody has a hundred percent solution for this. I'm saying, look, give me an 80%, give me an 80%. Listen to the constituents. They pay taxes like everybody else at these lower income areas. They're asking me to relate to you. They'd like to have their kids go back to go play in the park. And if it means, there's no way you're going to stop at all. There's no 100% cure for anything. But this is a, an area that says, look, let's try a pilot, let's do the pilot program, maybe if it works here and we see if those costs go down. Then we go to the east side. East side's got their problems with parks, but holding this off until we figure out the solution for homelessness and the prevalence, everything else that goes in these low-income areas, we're going to have a safety issue that we're never going to solve. Look at it realistically and logically. That's all I'm asking.
Anybody else?
Counselor Gomez, I, I, I'm not going to take away from what you're trying to do for your, I'm just saying, I'm going to put it up here so that I vote against it because I'm not going to vote against my own district.
I got it.
And their parks. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
No.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes six one. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We now move to the regular agenda. Resolutions, item Q one. Q one, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account in the 2025 general fund budget to the Pueblo Coral Society in the amount of $1,000 to sponsor Old Fashioned Christmas 2025 at 7:00 PM at Memorial Hall on December 17th, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Aleph, Council and Mayor Graham. This is a request from Counselor Regina Maestri to sponsor the Pueblo Coral Society's Old Fashioned Christmas event. This is a free event that'll take place on December 17th. The request is for $1,000 and this sponsorship tier includes three tickets to the Downtown Rewards luncheon in January. These funds will be used to cover the cost to rent Memorial Hall, which will help keep this as a free event. Council sponsored this event in 2023 for $6,000, in 2022 for $5,000, and in 2024 for $2,500. And the contingency balance, if approved, will be $13,988. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero. Uh, Mr. Clerk, item Q two. Q two, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account in the 2025 general fund budget to the Pueblo Downtown Association in the amount of $1,500 to sponsor the 2025 Pueblo Parade of Lights at 5:30 PM, starting in the Mesa Junction, ending in the downtown Pueblo on November 29th, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, I do. This is an ask from Counselor Brett Boston to sponsor the Pueblo Downtown Association's Parade of Lights. This is a free event taking place on November 29th. The request is for $1,500. Sponsorship funds will be put towards just the overall event costs. And council did sponsor this event in 2023 for $1,250, in 2022 for $1,000, and in 2024 for $1,250. The contingency balance, if approved, will be $11,509.88. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores, any questions?
Yeah.
Counselor Gomez?
Has any, has there been any thought put forward in reference to expanding the starting point of this place? Maybe a little more farther southwest and just from Mesa Junction, then working your way down the town? It seems like we're always forgetting those other neighborhoods a little farther up. I don't know who can answer that question, but I'm just throwing it out.
That would be a question for the Pueblo Downtown Association, which, which does this?
I think I'll go, I'll check with them. Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero. Uh, Mr. Clerk, item Q three. Q three, a resolution authorizing the transfer of $750,000 to project ED eight, excuse me, ED 0801 RMS IQ OR lease Pope Block, previously established in the 1992 to 2026 Sales and Use Tax Capital Improvements Project Fund. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have staff report.
Hi, Council, the resolution before you transfers 750,000 to project ED 0801, which is for the upkeep and maintenance specifically for the Pope Block building. Pending any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Mr. Martinez, you signed up to speak on this?
Yes, Mr. President. Could you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to sound like a broken record. I talked about the Pope Block building many times in the past. This is just a building that the city should not own. This is a waste of money. Another $750,000 of your money, my money, your neighbor's money, your cousin's money, your worst enemy's money. Just going to a building that we should put on the market and cut our losses and sell it for half a million dollars, $750,000 or a, a million dollars. Just sell the building, turn it in, into a business. Somebody could buy it. We could gain revenue of whatever business wants to move in. We're always talking about short on money and that's a perfect building right downtown and everything. So of course, I would urge you guys to vote no, but I know it's going to pass like in prior years, it could pass six one, five two or, or four three, but, or, or seven zero. But vote hell you want and waste our money again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, second, uh, by Counselor Gomez. Any questions? Counselor Maestri?
Oh, no, I just looked at the expense report. It's just, just, those expenses were just jagged all over the place. Very strange how they were reported. I mean, 549,000 for, you know, HVAC in one year. I mean, just, just some really strange way, you know, the, the electric bills and the gas bills and are all over the place. Everything's all over the place. So.
Sure. In 2018, we approved a contract with Poland Mechanical and they have a full-time employee there Monday through Friday, who oversees that HVAC system. They complete basic repairs, maintenance. I believe that contract is for roughly 28 to 29,000 a month.
Yeah. Yeah. So that just seems up there. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Gomez?
Just so I understand, so is that availability of, for purchase that buildings is off the, is that correct? Or is it on the, is it on the books for sale? Or we can't sell it?
We can absolutely sell the Pope Block at any time. I believe the only caveat that the city does have interest in the building is the data center. That's overseen by Unite Private Networks. So that, that is a data and internet hub for the city as an organization as well as the city in general.
So would that prevent a sale, that arrangement you have with the data center?
Not at all. So we would like to see provisions in a sale where we can still retain access to that small portion of the building. But that's the only
Okay.
caveat there, Counselor. Thank you.
That, that building has been, had offers on it several times since I've been on city council and they've always fallen through. Not because of the data center, not because of anything else. It's, it's cursed. It's a curse.
Halloween.
Happy Halloween. Uh, any other questions? Uh, let's call for the vote. Mark Alef?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
No.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes six one. Thank you. We now move to Q four. Q four, a resolution establishing project CI 2521 Greyhound Park Blight Removal, transferring funds in the amount of $500,000 from project account CI 2113 American Rescue Plan Act and depositing and appropriating $500,000 on project CI 2521 Greyhound Park Blight Removal. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Mr. President, Members of Council, good evening. The resolution before you appropriates funds in the amount of $500,000 from interest generated on the ARPA deposits and deposits that, that fund into a new project CI 2521 called Greyhound Park Light Removal. The project contemplates providing these funds as an incentive to the developer, the landowner who's there to eliminate blight on the property. The dog track, the former Greyhound Park facilities that are there, they've got a quote to demolish those buildings at about $600,000 or so. So this would help offset a large portion of that particular cost. They have spent an inordinate amount of money trying to keep the buildings in fair condition. There, there certainly, there's nobody occupying them, but trying to keep them from being broken into, vandalized. So this, this particular $500,000 is, is at this point up from the city. But Urban Renewal Authority has also, in their 2026 budget request, created a line item there for $216,000 as a potential reimbursement in 2026 if their board so approves. That would come back to the city as a, as their share of the demolition cost for this project. You may recall during our last staff presentation that there was a request from the developer a couple of years back for about $400,000 that Urban Renewal could not accommodate at that time. So this is a, this is an amount that they can accommodate, but they say they would have to wait until 2026 to share that burden. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you for that report. Mr. Martinez, you signed up to speak on this?
Yes, Mr. President. I know how this vote might go and this is just assuming, we all know how to spell assume, but I would urge you guys to put your ego aside and approve this because it's only a matter of time until some knucklehead or knuckleheads break into the building, light a fire, and that's going to take resources away from fire and PD. So again, just put your egos aside. Let this developer come in, have that sick building torn down because it's just blight. It's eyesore for everybody driving on, on the boulevard. I, I drive on there once in a while, not very often. So in a year or two, it could be developed, a potential hotel that was spoken about, potential some type of row homes or apartment complex and probably a mini strip mall or something. That's going to bring in revenue. Say all that's built by the end of 2027, end of 2028, and it, it'll look beautiful. We have all those other restaurants coming up on the boulevard. Let's improve Pueblo. This is your duties to help fix up Pueblo. That is the oath all of you guys took, once you guys were sworn in. So let's uphold your oath and put Pueblo forward, parties aside, egos aside. And I would entertain a conversation with you guys offline, of course. I talked to some of you guys on different topics. But let's just approve this and have this person come in and help the betterment of Pueblo, improve Pueblo and move Pueblo in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores on a second question. Did you have something?
I forgot to acknowledge that the developers are online as well tonight by Zoom. Patch and Mr. Blackburn as well are here to answer any questions you might have about the specific development plans that they have as well.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Boston?
No.
Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, I'm a little perplexed by the comment about setting our egos aside. I'm trying to figure that one out. But we have no guarantees on any of this stuff. And I think this all comes down to a timing issue. A lot of this stuff, there's no guarantees if you do do this. And we can try to make the building safer until somebody gets in and, and uses it for whatever use they want. You know, empty buildings are an automatic target no matter what you're doing to them. So I'm not an expert in this field and I don't pretend to be. But again, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, the kind of money that we have to spend to bring this up. If, if we have an immediate, somebody that's going to come in and immediately turn around, it's going to be occupied and it's going to be, is, is that the case? Is this going to be something that's going to be fruitful if we do that money right now?
So the developers have indicated that the, the demolition of the existing structure in the property are one of the big inhibitors to the development requirements going forward. So they've got a development plan that shows some hotels, some multifamily. There may be other uses that may be else out there as well. One of, one of the big things here is that this $500,000 as an incentive toward the demolition there wouldn't just be a free check. There would be also other redevelopment timeline requirements established as part of the agreement to convey this, this to them. That agreement hasn't been drafted yet, so we're just putting the funds into the account to authorize this. It's not just going to be a free check though, when they go demolish this.
What's the estimated timeline?
We, we have not had that discussion yet because
Zero range?
I, I would, I would estimate, I don't know if Mr. Patch has an idea, but, you know, we'd like to see developments start at least on the first project within two years.
Yeah, still, I just, still would like to get some kind of idea. What kind of range are we talking about? We're talking about a year, five years, what?
Yep. And one other, one other piece that we would also require is, has been negotiated or discussed here would be specifically ensuring that the right-of-way infrastructure is, or the right-of-way would be dedicated for a baggage road on the south side of Pueblo Boulevard through that property. So Faribault Lane is off to the west ways, but we would likely, through all of those properties on the south side of Pueblo Boulevard, need to construct a baggage road of some kind. That's been an issue on the north side of Pueblo Boulevard where we know it's cut by the park. But this is an issue because of limited Uh, but this is an issue because of limited C dot access at those, uh, at Mirror, at Prairie, and at Lake. This baggage road gives an alternate path for traffic to go east and west, parallel to Pueblo Boulevard, giving access to all that potential redevelopable property down there. So there's a couple of pieces that are key to the successful redevelopment there that we would require as part of any conveyance of these funds.
So again, yeah, I answered my question about the projections.
Timeline.
Give me, give me, give me a range. Give me something.
I would say that we would want to see our first project at least, uh, started here within two years.
Within two, within two years?
Yes.
And is there a timeline for when it would be? You can't answer that either.
First project or last one? I don't know. The question, if, if the question is, uh, you know, how long is it going to take? It's, it really depends on how, how attractive of a site that is. It's much more difficult to attract a developer to come redevelop this property when the dog track parcels or the dog track facilities are still there. That's been an inhibitor to this place so far. We have, uh, again, heard from the developer that there are, uh, plans that involve hotel redevelopment that are not going to move forward until the, uh, the property, the blight is removed. So that's been the indication from them so far.
There's no guarantee, like Mr. Martinez said, I hate to use his words, there's no guarantees.
Uh, there's never a guarantee, but I think our agreement there would put some conditions on the use of those funds that would uh, make sure that we have some incentive in place to see this redeveloped within a timeline that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Flores?
Uh, I'm supporting this and I'm supporting it because, uh, uh, the, uh, I, I've been at that place. I was there about a week ago. It's a mess and, uh, it's an attractive nuisance. Uh, it's wide open. The doors have been removed. Uh, children could potentially go in there and get hurt. The business people around there, you've got two large hotels, uh, that, uh, if I was the owners, I'd, I'd be cringing because uh, people driving up to check into the motel see this, uh, very ver- bad situation across the street. Uh, I'm encouraged at the location. The location to me is a prime spot off of I twenty-five, off of Pueblo Boulevard. Uh, it's a prime spot, but there's another reason, and that is we've got another issue on our agenda tonight with the new lift station. Uh, we're going to have an opportunity in the past to grow that area to both the south and the west of this, uh, commercial property. So there's just a lot of, uh, positive things that can happen. And I, I, uh, I would like to hear from the developer about his vision. Uh, obviously, uh, you said he's online. I'd like to hear him tell us, uh, how, once everything is cleared out, what kind of vision he has and what kind of, he, he may have already, uh, have a relationship with a hotel owner that, that likes that spot. So could we ask him to speak?
Mr. Patch, are you, uh, available?
I absolutely am available and would love to speak. Thank you. I appreciate the chance to talk to you guys this evening and thank you for listening. Um, my name is Jeff Patch. I am part of the development. Um, I am one of the owners of the development and we do have, I mean, like I said la- last meeting, we had no intention of actually tearing it down until thieves and, and vandals came in and destroyed the place. Um, they stole all the interior. What we wanted to do was turn that existing building into twenty-eight apartments. But that hope and those dreams were crushed from us when some vandals came in and stole all the piping and the electrical out of it. Um, even though we had an alarm system and we had, you know, I mean, it goes on and on and on, but that, that's beside the point. But once the building is down, which is going to be immediately, uh, you know, we're going to engage the demolition crew almost immediately from the time of funding. Um, we're just waiting to hopefully put this piece together to get that, get it torn down, get it cleaned up. We've already talked with One Choice Hotels. We've been in contact with Days Inn Hotels. They both have interest in putting hotels there. We've talked with other people that have also shown great, great interest. We've talked with a monster developer who would bring something absolutely wonderful to Pueblo and change the face of Pueblo if we can put it together. We've talked to several different people. The problem that we have at the present moment because we've been vandalized and because we've spent, I, I bet we've spent close to a hundred thousand dollars trying to keep the building up and clean and nice, and it's a losing battle, unfortunately. I mean, they, they, they finally stole our doors. We don't have any doors. Like one of the council members said, we, we, we don't have any doors anymore. We don't have any windows on the backside. They've cut the windows out. The thieves are relentless over there. But really, we want to get that debt torn down. We want to change the whole south side of Pueblo. We want to see Pueblo grow and flourish. And that, that's our main goal. Our main goal is to get that building torn down, put up something absolutely beautiful, whether it be, I have, I have probably seven or eight different renderings of things that we've gone through with Matrix Engineering out of Colorado Springs, who does a lot of work in Pueblo and has helped with the Riverwalk and helped with other projects in Pueblo. And we, we've been working with them tirelessly, tirelessly, trying to get some sort of plan one hundred percent dialed in to, that will fit for some developer. The problem that we're, we continue to have is the fact that we can't get it torn down. We've, we've been, we, we've, we've been kicked in the shin too many times and, and unfortunately have, have hit a roadblock. And we really want to make sure that this, it doesn't continue to sit like that. It's, it, it's sad. Um, it, it breaks my heart to see that building like that because that used to be a wonderful building. We had a flourishing business at one time prior to COVID hitting and us losing over thirty percent of our clientele. We, 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 you know, we want to see it, we want to see it get back to where it needs to be. We want to see that building come down. We want to see it be a beautiful set of hotels. We want to see it be a small strip mall. We want to see a car wash. We want to see whatever, whatever we can get in there. We want to change it and we want to make it happen for Pueblo.
Councilman Meister?
You know, I had the, um, opportunity to go to a CML class last week and it was a very interesting, um, class that I attended of, there was a, um, training session, um, from the United Land Institute. Um, and what I thought was, that was, was like really fascinating about it is they talked about um, developing and developing neighborhoods and so forth. And he's a, the, uh, our instructor was a former city planner for the city of Atlanta, Georgia, and, um, he talked about how his team comes in to a community per the request of, of the city. And they're consultants and they come in within a few days and they assess the area and they tell you exactly how much it's going to cost you, exactly what you need to put in that area, um, and what your return is going to be in that area. And I hear so many just ideas, 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 here, spend this money and we're, but, and you know what kind of really concerns me is he taught, Mr. Path talks about, or Patch talks about, you know, like, don't he, how's he going to become a developer or future development if he doesn't have the money to take down the Greyhound Park? His own funds to do that anyways. Um, you know, again, um, I would just hear, they're not based off of ideas. These dreams, these aren't based off of ideas and dreams. This company, actually, this consultant comes in and he gives hard facts on how this is going to work, how many jobs it's going to create, how it's going to grow the population. There are so many factors involved that he doesn't have, that's his, that's what his consultant firm does right then and there very quickly. Um, they don't mess around with, well, this might happen or that might happen. This is what needs to happen. This is how it's going to give you a return on your investment, whether it's worthwhile. And sometimes the city's ideas aren't always the best ideas financially. That's where the experts come in and tell us that. They say, well, this, your idea is not going to work, but this could work if you do it this way, this way, and that way. And I just think that, uh, I'm bringing them, gonna bring them in for a work session. And before we get into these everybody's ideas, things, I think it's, it's a good thing to, I mean, we hire consultants all the time to come in and consult, you know, just like we did with the Black Hills Energy. We had a study. We had consultants come in and tell us what was going to work and not work. And so, um, I think it's just worth the investment and worth the time, just at least for them to come to council and tell us, uh, what they offer and see if we're interested in their services.
Uh, Council Latino, do you have anything?
Could I respond?
Yeah.
If it's possible to respond real quick, just, I think the, the premise of Council Meister's argument here is that there aren't any other, uh, plans beyond ideas, and that's just not the fact. Uh, there are things that are being developed and there are consultants that are being engaged through Public Urban Renewal Authority and others to do the blights, uh, or kind of preliminary work for blight studies to put together the list of public improvement requirements that might be necessary to support the redevelopment of this site and others on the south side of Pueblo Boulevard. I think we need to recognize and look our constituents in the eye and say that this is a very important redevelopment site for the south side of Pueblo and for the city in general. Uh, it is a site right off of the state highway and directly off of I twenty-five. Uh, it is a prime site for, uh, retail redevelopment potentially. Uh, the hotels that could go in there also could also be, uh, a source of revenue that could potentially help some of these issues that we keep going over and over and over again with our budget and our shortfalls here. So us ignoring this or kicking it down the road to hire an Atlanta-based contractor to come in and help us when we have local consultants also already doing this work, uh, just feels a little bit, uh, like we're under, underappreciating the work that's being done by this consultant, by our team, and by our Public Urban Renewal Authority as well.
Well, um, just, just so you know, he's actually Denver-based. He was a city planner of Atlanta many years ago, and he's Denver-based and lives in Denver. And he is, they're, it's a nationwide firm and they're very well-recognized. In fact, their firm went into the LA, after the LA fires and they're consulting to rebuilding the city where the fire has destroyed the entire city. So they're pretty well-known and they're pretty, you know, they've got some things going for them. Um, and, you know, they have the credentials. That's what they grew up to be. And, you know, one of the things that in the presentation that he gave us, which was really interesting, was he said that, um, he said that, um, and I always say this all the time. He said, you know, the constituency, they're not the experts. And the city, the people who work for the city to include not just the leadership, but the city, um, in the city departments. Um, he said, I can hold the resumes and the, uh, licenses and the special certifications and my degree on the wall and they can't beat that any day. And so he's very confident in his work and he's put out CML, actually, um, is, stands behind him. And so I think it's always worth the conversation, right? Because we talk about getting the best bang for our buck. That's, that's within our authority here on council. And so you know, I just would like to see what he has to say about all these ideas.
Uh, Councilor Latino, did you say you had something?
Yes, I do. I, I support, um, what, uh, Councilwoman Meister has to say. Again, you know, w- we're talking about vandalism and, and it breaks my heart to know that that's going on and that this gentleman and his, in his organization, his, his team have had to endure that in this community. Again, that tells us something, doesn't it? That we're not getting it done as it relates to safety and security. And, uh, you know, we're short police officers, yes. But we have not been creative. We have not talked about how do we handle a situation where we're short law enforcement and take care of the problem that we have. We haven't addressed that. I, I'm not going to be supporting the, 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 the money that's being asked um, for this particular, uh, project because of the fact that, um, again, we, we don't have all that we need in terms of security. And it can continue no matter how much money we give out and how much money are we going to give out when we have projects in other parts of the city in other, in other districts like District Two and District Four that have situations where they could use money to enhance the business opportunities in that particular district. So I'm not supporting it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gomez?
Yeah, um, I would wonder if the developer, if he's still there. I didn't catch his name, which is first.
Jeff?
Jeff, still there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've, in reference to your, not only your investment, but this is kind of an investment for the city and, and the taxpayers as well. Would you guys ever consider, or could you ever consider with the businesses that might be coming in there and maybe stagger it a little bit, but funding a security like roving patrol or, or walking beats in certain times of the year, maybe for a commitment of three years longer? I don't know what the actual estimates would be, but we got to, we have these projects coming forward and we're not keeping the safety way out front. We could be doing this for naught where they're going to keep on destroying stuff. The citizens are asking us to pay attention. They're saying there's no visibility out there. Well, the way you solve that is by being visible. And I think the way to do it, I've worked and worked on a program called Sharing Team Operator, excuse, teen-oriented policing, public and private, where we involve a lot of professional security firms and look at a lot of these things and have a, I don't care if you want to call it a task force or a sit-down, because, believe it or not, our community is not the only ones going through this. There are solutions if you're willing to sit down and get past the animosity and just figure this stuff out. There's an answer. And I think we have the talent in here in Pueblo to do it. So for what it's worth, I don't know if you could commit to that kind of idea of putting together some kind of security operation. I don't know what the costs are. I'm not going to pretend I do. But there's got to be some way we can solve this without banging our heads against the wall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Boston?
Oh, I don't have anything.
No, you're good.
No.
Uh, Councilwoman Flores?
Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, we need to support this project. That doesn't mean we can't look at, uh, the two things. We, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be looking at this as, uh, waiting again for something here. This has a lot of implications surrounding security in that area. Uh, the potential of a fire, especially with winter coming. And, and I, 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 I want to hear this, uh, consultant that you're talking about any kind of information that we can obtain that's going to improve things. I want to hear it, but not at the expense of stalling anymore in this area. I drive by there every day. Um, and, uh, I believe that, uh, we can do both. Uh, they're not mutually exclusive here. This is a situation where we can do, we could chew gum and walk at the same time. So, um, that's my.
So I have a, I have a couple of questions. I mean, my, my, my deal with this is the same as it was two weeks ago when we talked about the Convergus, uh, building that you're asking to invest public money into a private project with absolute, I understand the vision, I understand the dream, but without any concrete plan moving forward. It seems to me, and, and I mean, you think there's a concrete plan, but why haven't we seen it? As soon as I saw the Convergus plan, I go, you know what? This makes sense. We're, we're transferring property. The city's getting something. There, the investment makes sense for the taxpayers. I look at this and I wonder, so my question, let me get to my question first. Are we able to lean the property?
Uh, again, I, I think in this particular case, it wasn't going to be a lean on the property. It was going to be a commitment through a development agreement that established timelines for redevelopment and certain redevelopment parameters. That was kind of what we were eyeing in this. But could you? I suppose, but we're not going through our dangerous buildings process to do this. We have a willing developer. This is normally used that dangerous buildings process for, uh, situation where there's, uh, non-compliant or unwilling or, or absent property owner. So it's a different kind of scenario in this case.
So I get, I, I guess, I hope you hear my frustration. My frustration is, is that I've seen nothing other than a piece of paper saying that something might happen at some point. I do not think that that's a smart investment of taxpayer money in something like that. There's nobody, I think, on city council or nobody sitting here in, in this, uh, uh, area today that would say, you know what, we want to leave that dog track out. We want, we want it to look ugly. We want it to be a a an eyesore. But also you have, I feel like I have a responsibility to the taxpayer that if if I'm going to invest their money in something, I, there should be some kind of concrete evidence of this plan. I understand you're talking about a development agreement. Have we seen the development agreement?
No, we would be drafting it. But those those two specific conditions are the ones that we would be including in there.
So my take on it is, is that I want this building to come down. I have no problem with the city investing taxpayer dollars to make it happen. But I would have to see an agreement or a plan moving forward before I would ever ever
You bet.
Where I could ever go to bed at night thinking that was a good decision for the taxpayer. Mayor Graham?
I just wanted to give you the total of the ARPA ARPA interest account. As of September 30th, there is $757,487. And that's where this lump of money would be coming from.
Thank you.
Can I?
So, yeah, and I would ask, how would you, based on my comments, how do you think we should proceed?
So there is obviously a lot more information forthcoming that has not been ferreted out yet, that isn't quite ready for primetime. So the piece is this, this demolition part is step one, and it's got to be done regardless of what redevelopment project comes. So there are a range of options. Obviously, Mr. Patch, over the last couple of years, has been working on these very specific hotel and other other development projects, but there is, there are other things in the hopper here that we're working through to get a it would be a larger project in that site, and it may also affect other adjacent property owners as well. So Mr. Patch and Mr. Blackburn own the Dog Track parcel, and they own another 10-acre parcel just to the south, not just to the south, but Skip a Lot and then further south. So if there are other pieces of property that need to be acquired by the city or by Urban Renewal or by a private redeveloper to put this whole package together, those are things that are in the works. So all of that, all of that timeline and everything else has is is still being ferreted out. This is just step one. And this is a place where the developer has has expressed initially that there is a concern about their ability to go forward until they have that knocked down. And we know that we've been spending resources on code enforcement, on taking care of adjacent property owners with the with the blight going on currently. Your 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 request is not unreasonable at all, but those are things that are.
Let me ask you this question. So if this was approved tonight, would there be any dollars spent before the development agreement was put into place?
There cannot be.
There cannot be.
I don't have a way to convey it until.
And then will city council approve the development?
Yes, they would come to you again by an ordinance. It would be an ordinance to approve a development agreement.
Before any dollars are spent?
100%.
Okay.
Yep. This would simply just put the money into an account that would allow for that.
That's very helpful information. Thank you for that information. Counselor Gomez?
Do we have enough information? Counsel Flores, do you think we have enough? I'm just curious, because I I kind of agree with you.
I think this last statement, Mr. Andrews just said, kind of solves any problems or concerns anybody has. We get to see the final development documents. And, you know, the city has been involved in investing literally thousands of people over the last 20 years. Anytime we provide assistance to any business, we take a risk. I mean, that's the definition of of working on developments is accepting the risk. So, but I, but the fact that we're going to look at this development agreement, I think we need to pass this so that you're able to start on that piece of it.
And one other piece with the with, to your, to your point, Mr. Gomez, the we we don't have the firm plan. I can't tell you which store is going to be in which spot. Those are, those, there's decisions that are going to be made also that are the developers. This is his private property. So there are, there are influences that we can have on that and influence this development to go the way that would be most beneficial for the city and the public. But this kind of helps us get to a place where we've, we've got a stake in the game beyond just our standard subdivision or land use processes. So we've got very specific requirements we want to put into that development agreement that would help facilitate a range of options that we could bring forward through urban renewal and through the city as well.
I never caught my my question answered. And when I asked for the developer, would they, what kind of commitment would they do to protect not just their investment, but the taxpayers' investment? Where, I'd like to hand the respond to that.
Sure. And just to be clear, what we're, what we're investing in here is the clearance, the removal of those facilities. So there would be bare land there next, would be the next step. So in terms of the secure, the security patrols, they, I I don't know what facilities or infrastructure out there to be doing, other than, you know, making sure there's not somebody out there dumping on the land. In the meantime, while this development plan is being implemented and restarted, if that makes sense.
Counselor Maestri?
So what's your timeline for demolition?
They're, they're ready to start. They have a quote. Again, it was a little, and I I believe it was a little bit over $600,000. But they've had that quote now for a couple of months. We've been talking about this. So they're ready to go as soon as they can get the, get the funding in place, get a development agreement in place, and get this demolition contractor going. And that would remove the blight.
So then the development agreement going to be ready then? It's going to be ready before the demolition?
If if this, if these funds are approved tonight, I could have a development agreement for, before you as early as the next meeting potentially.
Counselor Boston?
Thank you, Mr. President. Did I hear you correctly earlier when you said $216,000 if approved by PURA would be given back to the city on this?
That's correct. This is, this is their proposed, they have a line item in their proposed 2026 budget that would reimburse the city 216 of the $500,000 we're talking about.
Okay, just want to make sure I heard that. And then this lies in District Four, correct?
It is in District Four.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff, yes. Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, it hurt.
Yes. Joe Latino?
No.
Regina Maestri?
No.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes five-two. Mr. Clerk, we now move to quasi-judicial proceedings, item R1.
R1, an ordinance amending zoning restrictions to rezone 151 North Bradford Avenue from B3 Highway and Arterial Business Zone District to R6 Multi-Residential and Commercial Zone Districts, introduced October 14th, 2025 by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, councilors. The property owner is requesting to rezone 151 North Bradford from B3 Highway Arterial Business Zone District to an R6 Multiple Residential and Commercial Zone District. The purpose of the rezoning is to facilitate the construction of a billboard sign and future residential or commercial development. The rezoning site is currently undeveloped and located directly east of I-25 and north of City Center Drive. The proposed rezoning area is designated by the Comprehensive Plan as Urban Neighborhood. Urban neighborhoods allow dense residential development and are intended to support redevelopment in the city's older neighborhoods. The proposed R6 Zone District uses align with the primary land uses prescribed by the urban land use designation, which include single-family detached and attached homes, small-scale multifamily residential, neighborhood-scale commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval with a seven-zero vote. This concludes my, oh, excuse me, Mr. President. Staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number Z25-15, dated September 10th, 2025, be made part of the record for this hearing.
So ordered.
This concludes my report. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying there's no other testimony, this hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by by Counselor Flores, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven-zero. Mr. Clerk, R2.
R2, an ordinance extending in deferred filings periods from Memorial Heights subdivision to May 31st, 2026, introduced October 14th, 2025 by Counselor Brett Boston.
And we have a staff report. Hello?
President, members of council, good evening again. The ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance before you extends the deadline for excuse me, I'm sorry, the, where am I?
R2.
Thank you. Sorry, on the wrong page. So the ordinance before you extends the deferred filings period for the Memorial Heights subdivision. This is the subdivision that is the parking lot just to the north of City Hall. The SRDA, it's owned by Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority, but it's adjacent to SRDA. But Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority began a subdivision back in 2021. But there was a document that they did not sign at that time for a stormwater facility maintenance agreement related to the subdivision. They are now ready to sign that document, and based on that, we just need to extend the deferred filings period to keep the subdivision current. This ordinance will extend that through the end of May this year, or in 2026. But they are working with their board right now to get authority to sign that document, and if approved, the subdivision will be recorded and we'll move forward with that subdivision. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying there is no testimony, this hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second? Counselor Gomez? Questions? Counselor Martinez?
Does this affect that bus stop that's right there, Andrew?
It is adjacent to the subdivision. So yes-ish, it would, the the redevelopment of the site would consider the bus stop as one of the public infrastructure pieces, as we do in any site plan review. So the site plan review would likely be the forum in which that, any, any kind of changes might be addressed there. You're talking right on Main Street.
Yeah.
Yes.
So where do the subdivision is for the whole parcel?
There are, there are actually a few parcels there. So they're all owned by Urban Renewal, but they're there was, there was, there are a lot of strangely shaped ones there. So all of this ownership will be resubvented into one parcel.
Oh, okay.
Correct. So they're, they're going to have that entire parcel there, and then they can do a commercial site plan for redevelopment of the site.
Sorry, one more. And is that going to be the site plan, is that going to be submitted by PURA if they own it?
So whatever form they go, the the initial plan at that time was to put an RFP out for redevelopment of the site, and so a developer would have come in for that. I don't know that they've got a specific site plan in mind yet or use.
I was curious.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez? Item passes seven-zero. Mr. Clerk, item R3.
R3, an ordinance approving the Villabella subdivision filing number two, introduced October 14th, 2025 by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you. We have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, President Aliff, councilors. This is a 310-lot subdivision of 48 acres located south of Rawlings Boulevard, west of Bergamo Drive, and east of Thunder Wolf Drive. The proposed subdivision creates moderately-sized lots for single-family residential development and multiple parcels for public utilities, landscaping, drainage detention, and sidewalks. Parcel A through L are dedicated for perpetual use as public utility easements, landscaping, and sidewalk. According to the dedication on these subdivisions, surface amenities within these parcels must be replaced by the property owner in the event that the city or other utilities need to enter the easements. Property owners and/or the Villabella Metropolitan District Number One are responsible for installing and maintaining all applicable utilities, infrastructure, and landscaping. The subdivision dedicates a one-acre park, a little over an acre park, in parcel E of the Villabella filing number one subdivision. The proposed park meets the area dedication requirement of the PUD and is located within a half-mile of the residential lots within filing number two. The site is zoned PUD and governed by the residences of Villabella PUD Development Guide. All lots meet the 2,600 square feet minimum lot area requirement within the PUD. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a seven-zero vote. Mr. President, staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S2110, dated August 13th, 2025, be made part of this record for this hearing.
So ordered.
This concludes my report. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying there is no testimony, this hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Gomez, questions? Counselor Flores?
When I read this, the the background information, explain to me what pocket park means. I'd never heard that term. And one of the requirements is that they have a .0034 acre of a pocket park per dwelling. What the heck is a pocket park?
A pocket park, and I don't know the the technical standards for a pocket park, but I do know that they're generally between an acre to three acres. So we see quite a few pocket parks in the Blocks neighborhood up off of Abriendo, so those smaller little parks embedded within the neighborhood. So the PUD was amended to bring in this park dedication requirement. And what the developer is looking at doing is more plentiful, smaller parks within the neighborhoods that they're subdividing. And there's also a provision that the different filings, subdivision and filings can share a park, but they have to be within a half-mile of those residential lots. I'm sorry, I think I forgot your second question.
That was, that was all I was.
Oh, okay.
I had not heard that term before.
And then the dedication requirement, basically, we take that .0034, I think, is that correct?
Yeah, it it states, under the recently amended PUD Development Guide, the subdivider is required to dedicate .0034 acres of pocket park per dwelling unit.
Okay.
So that starts, I guess, the, times the amount of units.
Correct. So I I count up all the number of lots that are being proposed, since we're dealing with single-family here, and then multiply it times that .0034 to determine the amount of park area that's required for the development.
And that that aligns with our comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other ques, any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yep.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven-zero. Uh, Mr. Clerk, we now move to ordinances, final presentation. Item S1.
S1, an ordinance approving an agreement in the amount of $100,000 to provide eviction prevention assistance between the city of Pueblo and the city, the county of Pueblo and the city of Pueblo, Colorado Miss Corporation authorizing the mayor to execute the same, introduced October 14th, 2025 by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, President Aliff. So this is an ordinance that approves an agreement for previously budgeted and appropriated funds that are the CDBG CV. CV stands for coronavirus funding back in 2020 when we received it. We did budget and appropriate $300,000 in total for eviction diversion for folks who are experiencing eviction. And to date, we have contracted with Pueblo County for $200,000 in total of those funds. This would be the remaining $100,000 left. Pueblo County then works with public, Colorado Legal Services here in Pueblo, and they have a presence here in the courts, and they are able to intercept folks who are being evicted. They're able to leverage these funds with other eviction diversion programs throughout the state, including the one funded through Proposition 123. This one is actually very successful for a very small amount of funding compared to other programs around the state. This one has a limit of $1,750 per person or per household, whereas some of the state programs have, you know, up to $10,000 or more, up to five, $10,000 or five months rent whereas some of the state programs have, um, you know, up to ten thousand dollars or more, up to five, uh, ten thousand dollars or five months rent, uh, in total, whichever is more that they're able to support. So for a very small amount of funds, we're able to support that effort. In addition, this has been brought up, um, in conjunction with the work session that you had this evening. It's a very timely conversation for these funds to be deployed. They are completely out of funds in the eviction diversion, uh, program, and we do expect to see an uptick in the coming month because of what is happening with the SNAP benefits. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Elvis Martinez said. I, I didn't hear what you said.
Just tell us your name.
Elvis Martinez, and I want to echo everything that was said right now and then what, what Tammy brought up in the work session. And I do, do sit on the county board with Tammy and other people and we went over this and gonna, gonna go more in depth in another meeting next month that we have. And this, of course, will help se- several families or it, people who are a couple that may, maybe on the eviction process, of course, with, uh, government being shut down, this needs to be streamlined ASAP and once funds are there, funds could go out once approved by, uh, the, um, Tammy and, and her team, that's above my, my pay grade and not to throw you guys under the bus, but also above your guys' pay grade because those are the experts. I'm not in that. So this is much needed for all of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second? We're gonna hold off till Counselor Maestri returns? Let's call for the vote.
Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, item S two.
S two, an ordinance establishing project CI two five one eight, the Small Bin Business Window Repair Mini Grant Program and budgeting and appropriating fifty thousand dollars in funds accrued from the deposit interest related to the American Rescue Plan Act revenue into the said project number CI twenty five, uh, twenty, CI twenty five eighteen and introduced October fourteenth, twenty twenty five by Counsel Brett Boston. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. President, Members of Council, good evening. This ordinance before council will budget and appropriate fifty thousand dollars in funds, which will be distributed or which may be distributed from the city as part of a small business window repair mini grant program, providing up to one thousand dollars for eligible bus, eligible businesses for storefront window and door repair. These funds will come from earned interest on the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, the procedure for the grant funding will be established, uh, by the mayor with the approval of council and all grants will be awarded via resolution. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance?
Mr. President?
Sure.
Elvis Martinez. Elvis Martinez, again, the reason why I'm against this, this is just a Band-Aid like one business owner said on the news. I believe she was interviewed by News Five, but I could be wrong on News thirteen. But that's not here nor there. This is fifty thousand dollars. So if you guys could amend this and say twenty five thousand could be awarded the first six months, twenty five thousand the next six months, because this could be depleted in a month, two months or three months. And also how it was just stated by Mr. Giffords, of course, city council would approve this. What happens if it's a business that you guys own? There's a conflict of interest. What happens if it's a family member of your guys' and you guys would have to recuse yourself? So this just has so many elements to it that some of you guys may re, have to say, I can't vote on, say it's R three when it comes up in two or three months, because this is my first cousin or this is my mother, this is my son, this is my daughter's business. So there has to be full transparency on when unfortunately a business would have to come forward and say my front window was busted out and I went through all the steps and it's gonna cost eighteen hundred dollars, which eight hundred dollars will be out of the pocket of the business owner and a thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars of this money right here. So there has to be better language to this. And I'm not an attorney, so if Mr. Givers could speak on this more, or if you guys could make some sort of amendment. And like I said, say that twenty five thousand would be spent the first six months and once that twenty five thousand is depleted in the first six months, it's gonna suck to be the rest of the business owners. And then the next six months for next year, that twenty five thousand is open for those other people. And how I understand it, they could only come to council one time per this upcoming year. And I may be wrong about that. I'm just saying that. So, and of course, if a window costs two hundred dollars, a smaller window, they, they could get that money. And then if a bigger window add another business gets broken out or, or that same business and it costs seven hundred dollars, that's nine hundred dollars that they could use. So there's a lot of potential conflict of interest. If you know somebody or a relationship with somebody that owns a business that would have some of these knuckleheads busted out either by a bullet, a hammer, a bat or a rock. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, second by Counselor Gomez. Questions, comments? Counselor Flores?
Uh, I had.
Anybody else? Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yep.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri? Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, item S three.
S three, an ordinance approving and accepting a grant agreement and applicable conditions pertaining thereto with the Colorado Department of Transportation C DOT for this, for the A Step Toward Reducing Traffic Facil, uh, Fatalities Grant in the amount of thirty six thousand dollars from October first, twenty twenty five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Establishing project number PS twenty five oh eight, budgeting and appropriating funds in project PS twenty five oh eight, budgeting and appropriating funds in, to project PS twenty five oh eight and authorizing the mayor to execute the same, introduced October fourteenth, twenty twenty five by Counsel Brett Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Uh, Members of Council, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, this is a ordinance approving a grant that we've received since about two thousand twelve for speed enforcement, allows us to pay officers overtime, uh, to do speed enforcement efforts in our community. Uh, this year's grant is for about thirty six thousand dollars. Um, and that's staff's report.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Latino, any questions? Counselor Gomez?
Just a comment. This is one of those critical safety things I've been talking about, the need to slow down the Indianapolis Speedway in this community is just off the chart. So good luck.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino? Joe Latino?
You're muted, Joe.
Yes.
Uh, Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
Mr. Clerk, item S four.
S four, an ordinance approving a first amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Pueblo, city at Colorado Corporation and the Federal Highway Administration FHWA from the Raise Grant Program, award number six nine three JJ three two four four zero four nine five relating to the West Side Connector Project, authorizing the mayor to execute the same, introduced October fourteenth, twenty twenty five by Counsel Brett Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report? Is there cake or pie back there or what?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, yeah, oh, Andrew's got it. Never mind.
He's lacking.
Sorry, the law department was feeding me snacks back there. Apologize. Uh, the ordinance before you is, uh, will approve an amendment to our IGA between the city and the FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration, related to our raise grant from twenty twenty two for the West Side Connector Project. Specifically that, uh, the amendment deals with changes to the timeline of deliverables. Uh, this is not a cost related IGA change, but it does, uh, extend timelines for, uh, NEPA or National Environmental Planning Act related, uh, deliverables on the project. Uh, that concludes my report. I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Joe, Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri? Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
Mr. Clerk, item S five.
S five, an ordinance electing to certify abatement assessment roll number twenty twenty five dash one to the county treasurer and to have the county treasurer collect the same manner as other taxes introduced October fourteenth, twenty twenty five by Counsel Brett Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report?
Good evening, council. Yes, the ordinance you have before you tonight certifies this year's abatement assessment role to the county treasurer's office, uh, for collection with property taxes next spring. I thought it would be helpful for council to know that the value of the role this year is just over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the program, since it was implemented in twenty fifteen, has collected just under one point one million dollars. That's money that was recovered by the city that we had expended for cleanups on blighted properties in terms of, uh, litter, weed or board up abatements. And that concludes my staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Gomez, questions? Counselor Flores?
What can that million dollars be used for?
The money goes back into the general fund to be re-appropriated every year. So it could be used for any of the city's needs, but it's of course very important. Those types of problems in neighborhoods present significant risks to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. And this way we collect those monies so that we can continue to go out and keep doing that work.
Any other questions?
Let's call for the vote. Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero.
Mr. Clerk, item S six.
S six, an ordinance establishing project ED twenty five oh three, St. Charles, Industrial Parkway Infrastructure, transferring eight million dollars from the unappropriated fund balance of the half set sales tax fund for economic development and budgeting and appropriating eight million dollars into the project account. ED twenty five oh three, introduced October fourteenth, twenty twenty five by Counsel Brett Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Mr. President, Members of Council, the ordinance before you establishes a new project account for St. Charles Industrial Park Infrastructure. It transfers eight million dollars from the unappropriated balance of the half set sales tax fund for the design, planning and construction of public improvements related to the city's ownership uh, at the south end of St. Charles Industrial Park. Uh, that concludes my report. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come on down.
My name is Brett A. Burna. Uh, I'm in support of this project because it goes back to stemming even back to nineteen eighty four when we started all these, uh, capital improvement projects for the future development and the expansion of our economic base. This is really, really important on the south end of Pueblo to expand that for the needs of it. I mean, uh, it's part of a process which I really hope we got closer to the fifteen because we, we needed to expand the south end of the town and the industrial park and open all that footprint up as well as expanding the ability to build more housing and stuff in the south end of Pueblo, which takes the system all the way up over the hill on sewage and other stuff that we're gonna have that are very, very important with, uh, things, uh, moving forward in, uh, Pueblo for our economic development. So I really offer support in this and really look forward to the continued expansion of this program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Boston and Counselor Flores. Flores with the second. Any questions? Uh, Counselor Martinez?
Is this the total cost, Andrew?
No. So this is, this, um, initial appropriation would be again for the planning, design and any funds remaining that could be applied toward construction of the improvements that are designed and planned. So I anticipate that we're, well, the scope improvements we're talking about are public improvements for, uh, both wastewater and for road improvements on Lime Road. So there's a significant six and a half mile, uh, uh, wastewater upsizing or new construction that needs to be done. There's a lift station on the site that needs to be built. And then Lime Road is got, uh, obviously it's in pretty poor shape. Anyone's driven that a mile and a half section or so on the south end. And as you curve to the north, there's a portion of the roadway that needs to be realigned at some point. And so all of that work would be included in this project. The design, this estimate is about twenty percent of the high end estimate of the total public improvements cost for all of those improvements.
Okay.
And all of these improvements would be required regardless of whatever developer might happen there, but it does get this site ready for development.
Counselor Flores?
Uh, I serve on the Petco Board. I'm a voting member of the Petco Board. Uh, we have, uh, a potential, uh, business announcement under what we call Project Falcon, which you're aware of. And this vote is critical. I can't emphasize the word critical enough that, uh, we, uh, passed this this evening to begin the process. Uh, it would not surprise me if this company is not listening to us tonight and scrutinizing what we're saying and what we're doing tonight because they're ready to make a huge decision. And I can't emphasize enough how this has to be passed this evening.
Excuse me, Counselor Maestri?
Um, Mr. Hayes, clarify something for me. Um, would this, would these funds be used before the agreement that, uh, Mr. Flores is talking about? Um, be secured?
Yes.
So if you're, I don't think Counselor Flores said anything about agreement. I think he mentioned that there is a prospect that may have a denouncement.
Before that's secured?
Correct. So
Would we be?
In this particular case, the answer is this, these public improvements are independent of, uh, this particular prospect coming or not. These improvements would be required to make that site, um, developable for any industrial, um, development on that site. So, um, it's, it's a critical step, I believe, in that, in that prospect, making their decision on whether or not to come to Pueblo. So if this was denied, I think that would weigh heavily on their decision. Uh, however, the public improvements need to be done there regardless. And so the city's investment in this certainly adds value to that property.
So we would be, say we didn't have a prospect, we would be front loading, uh, infrastructure for another in case somebody comes?
Uh, well, that is the St. Charles Industrial Park. It's been subdivided, zoned and designated as an industrial park. So it is in already a, uh, kind of designated area where economic development is expected to occur. This was done over, you know, years ago. Uh, but this will be the fourth subdivision filing that we have, uh, in process right now to resubdivide the city's ownership into, um, but we're cleared up, we're cleared up some land issues here with, uh, a little piece of the solar that exists to the north, uh, rail ownership and then creating a single parcel still for, uh, future development there. When again, whether it's this Project Falcon or another prospect in the future, uh, these are again improvements that will be required to be done regardless of which, um, project may go forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boston?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, what do you think the, um, estimated total cost of this project would be?
Right. So this, this eight million dollars is based on a high end estimate of forty million dollars for all of those improvements.
Forty million?
So it's again a six and a half mile wastewater line, uh, either partially new construction and partially upsizing, uh, construction of a large lift station that's there and the realignment of approximately, I would say, uh, reconstruction and realignment of approximately two and a half miles of road or so.
And when it comes to that road, uh, I heard there's a possibility that the county may be chipping in to help with that. Is there? Is there any truth to that?
So there are, so it's a good point, sorry. So there's a section of the roadway that is out near I-25 that, we're talking about Lime Road, starts out there and it's actually in C-Dotts right away, just at the interchange. A small segment that's in the county, and then it goes back into the city's ownership for a while. Just as it curves back to the north, then it goes back into the county. And so there's got to be at least some coordination between the city and the county on, on whatever scope of work and whatever authority we have to do the project. Our ideal situation would be that we are executing this project as a single project under authority that the county will give us as well. So that's our anticipated ask going forward. At this point, that hasn't been secured yet, but we're going to have those conversations here to determine how that project might be able to move forward with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef, yes. Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yeah.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero. What a good Mr. Clerk, item S seven. S seven. Any chance we can do away with S's? At, you know, late at night, the S's become F's. S. Mr. Clerk, S seven. Okay, S seven, an ordinance approving and accepting a quick claim deed from Ruth Lorraine Girion for the property legal description as lot 43 through 46, block 15, Sunnyside Subdivision, County of Pueblo, State of Colorado, introduced October 14th, 2025 by Counselor Brett Boston. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Mr. President, members of council, the ordinance before you approves the acceptance of the deed that's attached to the agenda item that you have tonight. This is a residential property that was destroyed in a fire. The prior owner is, was deceased, and he conveyed that property to his sister, who has attempted to try to get the property cleaned up, but there was no insurance. Her brother did not have insurance on the property. And so there are no proceeds, I guess, coming to be able to affect that cleanup. In this particular case, what we frequently find is we have situations like we have on route where we have a deceased property owner and no resources. In this particular case, the property owner is willing to work with us and give us that property so that we can get it cleaned up, and it's not going to have to sit in a burned-out state for years. So this particular property owner, again, is willing to convey the property to the city. We will clean it up and then put it back out to higher and better use through our housing department. That concludes my questions, and I'll take, or concludes my report. I'll take any questions you have.
It's like the S, right? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none. The hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second? Counselor Gomez, questions? Counselor Maestri?
So when do you expect demo on this property?
So this, we have demolition funds remaining in our CIA N23 account that would be used for this. But we would have to, so Regional's been out there to do the initial assessment. We've gotten the initial report back from the environmental consultant. It's still going to take a little bit of time to get a variance again from the state on this one. But it's, it's not, we don't have to go through the process of doing all the notifications and everything else first that we would normally do when we don't have a cooperative property owner.
What did the abatement report say?
There is, has been declared as a major spill site because there is friable asbestos that has been spilled on the site. So it's, the, the, the structure's completely damaged and basically a pile at this moment. There's not, there's no standing walls or anything like that remaining, if that makes sense, but there
So it's burnt down to the ground?
Nearly to the ground. It's, it's very similar, I would say, to the, to the route property that we've
On an average, what have those been costing to remove something like that?
In this particular case, I think we're somewhere in the, in the ballpark of $50,000 or $60,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef, yes. Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Item passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, item S eight. S eight, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the City of Pueblo, a Colorado-based corporation, and Trust Works Operation LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, introduced October 14th, 2025 by Counselor Brett Boston. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, President Alef, members of council. This is an ordinance that goes in conjunction with an ordinance and some agreements you approved back on September 8th. On September 8th, the city council approved an employment agreement with Trust Works. And in conjunction with that, a contract to buy and sell real estate for the property located at 33850 United Avenue and Airport Industrial Park. And so the reason that Trust Works was looking at this piece of property was for access to the rail. And this agreement essentially gives them the ability to use the rail to offload and on-road, unload their trusses that they're going to manufacture at the site. We have, we are set to close sometime in November. The title of company had requested an improvement plot survey, so the closing got bumped back. So I just want to correct in the background paper, it says that the, the property should close on November 7th. But that's going to be pushed back to a later date here in November. Also want to let council know that we, we've done this license agreement to allow them to have access to the rail. In doing this, we have realized that the BNS, BNSF has an agreement with the city that needs to be reworked. So we're in the process of working that with the railroad. So you're going to see come before you probably within a month or so, another agreement that's going to amend this in conjunction with that agreement with BNSF. So just want to put that on your radar. But this, a license agreement will allow them access to the rail. So as soon as they get onto the property, they can start doing their business right away. And so that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none. The hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Flores. Questions? You guys good?
Good.
Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef, yes. Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Tino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez? Item passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, item S nine. S nine, an ordinance approving a sublease agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado-based municipal corporation, and the Pueblo Depot Activity Development Authority, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same, introduced October 14th, 2025 by Counselor Brett Boston. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Mr. President, members of council, good evening one more time. The ordinance before you approves a sublease agreement between the city and Pueblo Plex for lease of a facility. It's a 45,000 square foot, or half of a 90,000 square foot, a 45,000 square foot space in a warehouse there for us to be able to relocate the currently stored impounded vehicles in the Trust Works property that's being conveyed to them. This will allow us to remove those vehicles to a place where they can be stored securely. We had presented some other options to council previously that were far more expensive. This particular option is $3 a square foot for that. So this, this particular lease is also, there at the Pueblo Plex, it's a secure facility that is originally constructed via vehicle maintenance facility, so it's appropriate use for the storage of those vehicles. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none. The hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores, questions? Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
And Sarah Martinez? Set, item passes seven zero. All right. We're going to move into a council member conflict of interest. Counselor Latino is going to be excused from the meeting due to a conflict of interest with agenda item number U one. So you can sign off now, Counselor Latino.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we now move to communications, item U one. U one, a citizen filed an ethics complaint against Counselor Joe Latino. He's still online. Yes. Please. And I think by definition that, never mind. We have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, President Alef, members of council. This was, as you said, an ethics complaint against Councilman Joe Latino. It was filed on October 21st, 2025 by Alice Grimm, who is the representative for the Page Union. I believe each of you have received a copy of the complaint. We did provide to you today an attorney-client confidential memo, talks about our analysis of the complaint. Assuming that all the facts alleged in the complaint are true, as we need to do at this stage, it's the opinion of the law department that the complaint does not state a claim because it does not state any part of the ethics code that is actionable. And just want to point out, the city council has received several complaints that have come before it this year that don't state an actual claim or state a claim for relief under the Code of Ethics, but instead allege violations of the framework and the purpose of the Code of Ethics. And so I just, I put that out there just to, to let you guys know that that's generally where most of these complaints fall, is, is talking about the purpose and the framework of the Code of Ethics. But in order to be an actual claim, there has to be some sort of, the way our Code of Ethics is written is typically there has to be some breach of fiduciary duty. And in this particular claim, it doesn't state a claim. So that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that staff report. Is there a motion to accept the communication?
Motion to accept the communication.
Is there a second? We have a motion by Counselor Boston, a second by Counselor Maestri. Any questions on accepting that? Let's call for the vote. Mark Alef?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
No.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez? Item passes five one. All right. Is there a motion to investigate or to dismiss?
Motion to dismiss.
We have a motion to dismiss from Counselor Gomez. Is there a second?
Second.
By Counselor Flores. Any questions? Counselor Boston?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just kind of looking back at what you kind of said, it kind of seems like the ethics code isn't really written to encompass what is considered ethics or ethical, in my opinion. You know, I think it might be worth potentially looking into as a council and a body to hold ourselves to a higher level of ethics and maybe even write that into the code, what those parameters should be. You know, we're elected, we're professionals, we're supposed to be leaders. I talked about this possibly being a ballot initiative, but I didn't have time to put together something to get it onto the ballot this year. So I don't know. I think that's something that maybe, if I'm still here, I'll probably be bringing it up next year and just, you know, food for thought. But, you know, because I don't think just having a fiscal claim should, it should be the only thing that is considered ethical. I think there should be a larger definition and a higher standard we should hold ourselves to.
Any other comments? Counselor Flores?
I have several questions. Number one, I, I don't think changing our ethical code made any difference in this case. There's no stated claim here. But this is a, this is a question, a legal question, okay? Which really, you know, opens up the difference between a mayor and a city manager. Every one of us up here, we have no authority to do anything with any employee in the city. They all answer to the mayor. So the question is, how could Mr. Latino have stated, or how could these two individuals state a claim when he would be no different than a person on the sidewalk, maybe confronting them with the same thing? Mr. Latino and any of us here on the council, we have no authority to do anything to coerce anybody. I think the majority of the employees know that, but not all of them. There's over 800 employees. So my question is, does it, would that be a factor had, had a claim been stated? The fact that we have no authority as a city councilman, and Mr. Latino didn't have that either, to, to direct or intimidate anyone, we have no authority.
So city council does not hire, fire, supervise, or discipline employees directly? I, I can't speak for the complainants in this particular case as to what their subjective thoughts were on being intimidated. I, I, I think, like you said, I don't know that there's a lot of, there may be some employees that aren't clear on those, on those parameters. So again, I can't speak to what they were thinking. But you are correct, city council does not have any ability to hire, fire, discipline employees directly.
So the question would have been, why were they intimidated in the first place? But the question, again, had we, had we had a city manager, I think it's the opposite. Then we could be accused under an ethics rule of intimidating employees because we would have an indirect line of being able to do something with those people. So I, I want that difference to be noted here because it's significant in this particular case. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
Didn't we just approve Carla, the arbit, the, the Page wages? Yes, so city council does have the ability to vote on pay increases and, and anything that has to do with the union contract. And the complainants were a part of the union. So there is a power differential there. While council may not supervise them on a day-to-day basis, we approve their pay. We approve how much they receive. If they receive anything, we literally just approved that not a month ago. So there is a substantial power difference there. I think that it was this, even though there was no financial gain, I think that it was inappropriate. I think that our city employees don't deserve to be yelled at at work while they're trying to do their job. Particularly when there is a power differential between elected officials and the employees that we approve their pay.
But Page didn't make this, this complaint. It was two individual employees.
Did Page make this complaint, Carla?
My understanding was the complaint was lodged by Alice Grimm, who is the
President.
President of the Page Union.
She did it on behalf of two employees.
Who are part of the union.
It was a third party. Yeah, it was a third-party complaint because the employees themselves didn't complain, complain. It was a third party that made the complaint. And, you know, again, here we are coming up with what a person was thinking behind what is being said. And that's, now we're, we're going, we're falling into that same rut that we always get into, what people are thinking behind their actual words. And, you know, not sure why they brought this complaint forward. And as far as a power play, it'd be when, it'd be one thing if they weren't voting for their pay. And then you might have a case there. But, you know, everything is, th, these complaints are just getting out of hand. They're used to weaponize agendas, and it's just gotten ridiculous. And so there is something that we can do about this, and we could put it back into the president's hands, and he could make a determination on whether this stuff is even going to come forward. And I think that's what council should visit because it's just been a free-for-all with these complaints. They're unsubstantiated. They come up here, they fail to state a claim, and it's just another, this is the new Pueblo leadership, the public shaming, the harassing, the bullying, and all this name-calling and all these accusations that are being made about the public leaders because they don't like them. So they don't, they don't like what they have to say. They don't like what they have, you know? They don't like what they're thinking. And then they're, they're speaking for them through their words by implying that they mean something other than the actual words they've spoken. They did that with Counselor Gomez. They've done it with me. They've done it with Counselor Flores. It's just all the way around the board, and it's just gotten ridiculous. You know, I mean, there's a lot at stake here with the actual complainant, you know? I mean, they put $15,000 into the mayor's campaign to keep I mean, they put fifteen thousand dollars into the mayor's campaign to keep the mayor. You know, all the unions did, twenty thousand dollars total. So you know, I mean, everybody's got, has bought in on an interest here. They have a buy-in on this campaign coming up. And they're using things like this to weaponize themselves against those who are have a stake in, in the elections. So that's just too bad. But, you know, that's what we get, I guess. You know, you, you, you get elected, you, you're part of it. So.
Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, this is an example of something that would probably be laughed out of court. An arbitrator's office, a referee, whatever, maybe we should look at that. But I, I'd feel comfortable we couldn't do it. And it's somewhere in there that, that the president used to make decisions on screening this kind of silly stuff. But you know, I wouldn't even be opposed to the president counsel and the city attorney having a common sense discussion on this and say should even, we'd be wasting our time on this. It's just a waste of time. Thank you.
Well, it is also leaves up for public shaming. You know, based off of unsubstantiated allegations, basically.
Counselor Flores?
I, I just have one other quick question, and that is the fact that the two individuals didn't file the complaint, but a third party did. It, it, that seems odd to me that the third party is making the complaint on behalf of, she's acting as an agent on behalf of two employees. So this is odd to me. It, it seems to me that it would have more substance if the two employees themselves would have made the complaint.
Counselor Boston?
I'm kind of going back to what people were just saying. I don't even know. Maybe another thing to consider is why we even handle our own ethics complaints of our own colleagues, you know? Maybe that should be, as other people have stated in the past, an independent ethics commission or some company that handles that. I don't know if we really have any necessarily business being the ones that, that be's in the first place.
Okay. Counselor Martinez?
I just, I just have to take issue with the fact that two counselors are saying that this is silly, that this is unsubstantiated, when like this, we're talking about our employees and we're so quick to discredit their accounts and that when they're saying that they feel unsafe at work, that's a red flag for me and for them for as elected officials that were just saying, oh, it's just silly. Like it, it totally discounts their lived experience, what they experienced. You, I mean, no, no one of us was there. And the exact, but it's not silly then, that this is how they felt. That's why they submitted a complaint. And I don't think that they should be, you know.
Silly being to lie.
I'm.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
You good?
Yeah, it's just, I'm, it's, this is, it's, when we talk about respect, like this is, it's just sad.
Are we good?
It's just a difference of opinion. Just, nobody's got a little of the temperature a little bit. That's all we're having, having to discuss, a dis, a a discussion on what we believe and how we see it. I don't like people talking for me. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion to dismiss. With a second, let's call for the vote. Mark Aleth?
Yes.
Brett Boston?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
No.
Item passes five-one. All right. I want to remind everybody, if for any reason you're going to go out and adopt a cat or a dog, make sure you use HSPPR, Paws for Life, or you go to Cooper's Companion or one of our good rescue organizations. And when you do it, make sure that you neuter and spay your pets and put in a chip. So if they ever get lost, we can find them. With that, we are now adjourned. There ought to be others to place against.